Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the April 2025 regular board meeting. Trustees. If I can ask all those who are able to stand for the land acknowledgement and national anthem. We acknowledge we are hosted on the lands of the Mississauga, of the Anishna, the Haudenosaunee, Converse, the Andauvendak. We also recognise the enduring presence of all First Nations, Métis and Inuit peoples. Thank you. Please continue standing. Please continue standing for the playing of Oh Canada. As part of the Greek Heritage Month celebrations that wrapped up in March, this rendition is performed by Gordon A. Brown Middle School students, accompanied by teachers Talios Pois and volunteer Dimitra Karimaneidis. Thank you. Trustees, with our last board meeting taking place in February, since we didn't have a board meeting, regular board meeting during March, we will be celebrating both the Greek Heritage Month as well as Sikh Heritage Month. Part of the... Oh, before we go there, I would like to have a mover in a second to approve the agenda. Can I have a mover? Trustee Arts, seconded by trustee Hassan. All those in favour? Anyone opposed? Okay, that's carried, thank you. As I was saying, we will have the recognition of both Greek Heritage Month as well as Sikh Heritage Month. Today, Greek Heritage Month wrapped up well last month. This is the 10th anniversary of the Greek Heritage Month committee doing Heritage Month celebration at TDSB. We would like to invite trustee Pay and trustee Erhard to begin to offer some remarks related to Greek Heritage Month and TDSB.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Yassas, hello in Greek. It's a pleasure to celebrate the 10th anniversary of Greek Heritage Month at the TDSB. Homer's epic poem, Odyssey, has inspired this year's theme. Odyssey, A Decade of Celebrating Greek Heritage Months. Our Odyssey began when the TDSB first recognised Greek Heritage Months in 2015. Since then, we have explored themes that connect our shared history and the present. The enduring Greek spirit, the harmony of mind and body, the joy of belongings, and the power of freedom and unity. The 10th anniversary celebration began March 1st with an opening event at the Downview Health and Wellness Academy. This occasion featured a vibrant showcase of musical performances, artistic presentations, and engaging student-like displays. To hyperbloom this year's theme to schools, the planning committee created the Classroom Event Calendar. Each day featured activities to help students and staff celebrate Greek Heritage Months. Daily themes include Musical Mondays, Travel Tuesdays, Wisdom Wednesdays, Theatrical Thursdays, and Foodie Fridays. Returning for 2025, a multimedia contest was open to all TDSB students and staff. Students were encouraged to incorporate this year's theme into their posters, essays, and more. Congratulations to these student contest winners. Grace Nix of the Muni Valley LE program, Helen Vassilopoulos from Taraweeu Willowfield Public School, Ophelia McQuies of the Daphenbaker ILE program and Chester Elementary School, Nancy Starro-Pulis of Downview ILE program and Ripton Public School, Billy Vasepolos from Taraweeu Willowfield Public School, Nicolaita Nico-Pulis from Amniros Greek School and Bathborough Drive Elementary and Middle School, Yanni Kontropakis from Australia Dallas Greek Schools and Northland Elementary and Middle School, and Maria Mazin-Tarres from Sakritis Credite School and Lawrence Park Collegiate. Now I want to pass on trustee Sarah Erhard for some remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you trustee Pay. And so, as mentioned by trustee Pay, these students were recognised, and they were recognised at the April 5th closing event at the Greek Community Centre of Toronto. And thank you for trustees who joined for that. It was, it was a beautiful event. It was a memorable occasion that also featured traditional song and dance performances by students from TDSB schools, the international languages programs, and Greek community language programs. The April 6th culminating event took place at the annual Greek Independence Day parade along the Damforth. It was inspiring to witness TDSB students, staff, families, and community members marching and spectating to honour this significant cultural occasion with pride and unity. And it was also a beautiful sunny day, so thank you to trustee colleagues, including trustee Debbie King, who joined for the event and marching with TDSB. New for this year, the planning committee collaborated with the Helena Heritage Foundation to present the Damforth, a historical walk through Toronto's Greek town. The immersive 90-minute walking tour offered students a glimpse into the lives of Toronto's Greek community by exploring the domestic, religious, social, and political landmarks along Damforth Avenue. And I want to sincerely thank all TDSB staff and educators for championing this, bringing it to life, working in partnership with Helena Heritage Foundation, and also Greek Community of Toronto, Greek Town on the Damforth. Just seeing everyone in the community come together, and to see grade six students just really engage in streetscapes and taking in culture that opens them up to discussions about all forms of culture. It was just really special, and I hope those trustees that joined throughout the month really enjoyed it. And so, over March through this, over 1,000 students had the opportunity to engage with local history, gain insight into the contributions of Greek Canadians, and appreciate the lasting impact of Greek Town on Toronto's cultural identity. We'd like to close with a special Greek Heritage Month video, and this highlights the past decade of celebrations at the TDSB, capturing the spirit, pride, and cultural richness of the Greek community. And then, I'd also like to thank the volunteer planning committee for all of the hard work and enthusiasm this year, but also for 10 years, and prior to that for championing bringing Greek Heritage Months to the TDSB. I had the opportunity, through the magic of Facebook, to find a photo that was taken at when trustees moved a motion to recognise Greek Heritage Month 10 years ago, and I was amazed to recognise educators that are still in our system today and still contributing as co-chairs to the Greek Heritage Month. So, thank you again, and we look forward to many more years of celebrating Greek Heritage Month together. Ef Aristo, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much trustee Pay and trustee Erhard. We have a video to play.
I'm Charlie and I'm Greek.
Hi Charlie, what does being Greek mean to you?
Being Greek makes me feel connected to ancient and modern history. As a Greek, I have a strong connection with my family in Canada and Greece. In addition, I have a sense of pride in my culture and language. Fun fact, approximately 150,000 English words come from the Greek language. Thank you for listening to What Being Greek Means to Me. Yasu, bye.
What does being a Greek god mean to you? Being a Greek god means that you love Greek culture, which is like loving Greek gods such as Zeus for striking lightning and Hermes for being the god of herds and flocks. Being Greek has also been part of the country, Greeks! Yes, a flag with blue stripes and blue cross at the corner. Thank you, TDSB.
Being Greek to me means being proud of my culture, proud of my tradition, and sharing everything that I know and love with everybody around me.
Someone who has had a lot of Greek friends is like picking up a second language.
My name is Vienna, and let me tell you why I love being Greek.
Don't worry, I'll keep it short. I love about everything anyway, so I can just sum it up for you. We all have learned about Greek history at least one day in our Greek school classes. Come on Cyclops, Alexander the Great, anyone? Come on, we all love going to Greek dance practice with our cousins and our friends, especially if you go a lot like me.
Yeah, every Monday and Saturday.
I know this isn't just my favourite topic, I know there's a lot of you guys out there. My favourite food is gyro and...
Greek food, bro, it's just better.
Gyro, not gyro. And last but not least, something that will always be used for us Greeks. The excuse, to be loud! Sorry for that, but now you get what I meant by I love everything about being Greek. Remember, you've got to end it off with a nice Greek quote. "To Gellio Carne Callo Stinigia." And until next time, thank you.
Thank you all. Next, we will move on to some remarks related to Sikh Heritage Month. We have trustee Arts and trustee Hassan speaking on it.
Thank you through you, Chair. So, it's great, with great excitement that we celebrate Sikh Heritage Month at the TDSB. In April 2016, we became the first school board in Canada to recognise Sikh Heritage Month. It has been recognised across Ontario since 2013 with the implementation of the Sikh Heritage Month Act and celebrated on the national stage since 2019. The TDSB theme for Sikh Heritage Month 2025 is Ekta, or oneness, solidarity and resilience. Celebrating Sikh diversity and shared humanity, we foster dialogue, learning, and collective action. Through storytelling, workshops, and school-wide initiatives, we highlight how Sikh teachings inspire unity and empower students to stand against injustice with courage, passion, and Chardi Kala, meaning relentless optimism. To kick off celebrations, the Sikh Heritage Month Planning Committee organised a virtual celebration for all students, staff, and community members. This event was, this event was filled with student performances, traditional music, poetry, and more. Author Navjat Khaur served as the keynote speaker, engaging the audience with her message of inspiration. Thank you to Chair Shan and Director Latush for sharing words that highlighted the importance of diversity, belonging, and all heritages in schools and community. For those who missed the celebration, please check, check out the Sikh Heritage Month message on the TDSB website for a link to the video recording. The next slide. A poster challenge was held and invited all TDSB students to enter an image that captures this year's theme, Ekta, solidarity and resilience. Up first, we have Tanish, a senior kindergarten student at Gracdale Public School. The next submission comes from Sukmani, Sukmani, sorry, Sukmani, a grade seven student at Smithfield Middle School. Congratulations to these contest winners, and thank you to all students and staff who participated in the opportunity. And now I'd like to turn it over to trustee Hassan.
Throughout April, the planning committee has organised educational offerings for students, staff, and community members to learn Sikh heritage. Earlier this month, we hosted events with two inspirational Sikh individuals. Perdeep Pandar is a UCOM-based Bangra dance artist with a large social media following, and he addressed elementary students by sharing his knowledge on Ekta, solidarity, and resilience, and providing uplifting Bangra dance lessons. TDSB secondary students were able to join a virtual meeting with lawyer and former member of the parliament. The special topics included anti-Sikh racism, Sikh identity, and the role of Seva and Chardi Kala in social justice. For further learning on Sikh heritage, informative podcasts have been posted to the TDSB website. This year, the planning committee has added three new episodes to the incredible list they already have. The new interviews include Guratam Singh, along with Rosie Carr, the CEO of Concept One Learning Centre and Early Concepts, and Tina Singh, a digital content creator and occupational therapist. Don't forget that TDSB educators can visit the professional library for additional classroom resources, including a Sikh Heritage Month toolkit. So, we want to, we want to close by thanking the volunteer planning committee for a terrific month of Sikh Heritage Month celebrations, and we appreciate your dedication. And you can follow us on X at TDSB underscore S H M for daily updates all spring long. Thank you, and wishing everyone a wonderful Sikh Heritage Month.
Thank you. Thank you trustee Arts and trustee Hassan for your remarks related to Sikh Heritage Month. The next thing on the agenda is my report, so I'll start with that. So trustees, welcome back. It seems like it's been a while since we've had no board meeting during March, but things have been busy for us during these months. Particularly, I was able to take the opportunity to be at many events related to Greek Heritage Month, as mentioned earlier. It was a fabulous time of learning. It was a time to not only acknowledge Greek community here, but also the contribution Greek community has made over centuries to education, both in terms of methods of learning, content that we learn today, but more importantly today in our school system. In TDSB, there are a number of Greek Canadians who are educators, administrators, and advisory officers who are doing fabulous work in acknowledging and supporting all of our students. And I talked about my experience as a newcomer youth to Easter Collegiate. When I came as a refugee youth at the age of 16, there was a Greek teacher who actually helped us form the Tamil Students Association, and I was able to become a president there. I'm sure that particular leadership role helped me to be here, and that teacher's impact helped me succeed as well. So, the educators within the Greek community have had a phenomenal role in our system, so I want to take this opportunity to thank them and congratulate them for the 10th year well-organised anniversary Greek Heritage Month celebrations. As we also mark Sikh Heritage Month, the concept of Ekta is something that is very necessary today. The concept of unity, solidarity, and resilience are important concepts that from the Sikh heritage we can take into our classroom as we navigate many, many challenges locally and globally as well. So, let me also give you a good news that happened a few minutes before we started the meeting today. We had a big cheque from Embridge for about $450,000 because of the hard work of our staff and our system in leading within Ontario as one of the top school boards in energy retrofits, lowering utility costs, and reducing greenhouse gas emissions, and we received that cheque. So, let's give a big round of congratulations to our facility staff. And we see your work and we appreciate the work that's being done. You know, sometimes we often focus on classrooms and a lot of work gets done in the facilities, including this work that's going to impact quite a bit in our learning spaces and keeping our commitment to address climate change. I want to also begin by, there's a number of election-related matters to share, but most important election-related matter is our trustee by-election that happened in Ward 11 for trustee for Dun Valley West. I'm pleased to welcome our trustee, newly-elected trustee, trustee Stacy Klein to the first official board meeting, regular board meeting. Welcome to TDSB, and thank you. Thank you. Thank you trustee Klein for putting your name forward during one of the coldest campaigns that you could see and, and the campaign and the election. So, close to 4,600 people come out and vote for a trustee position, which is great turnout for a by-election, trustee election, and goes to show the work trustee Klein and other candidates did to engage the community. And we look forward to working with you. Justie Klein has, as many of you probably know, has experienced being an elementary teacher before and currently volunteers with the school as well. And that brings a very unique perspective in addition to all the passion she has for public education. So, we look forward to working closely with you, supporting you, but also getting your support for all of us to learn from you as well to advance our multi-year strategic plan. Thank you, congratulations again. Right, I will move on to some other election news. We also had trustee, student trustee elections that happened, and we are pleased to welcome the new student trustee elects. They don't start until September, but we wanted to use this opportunity, since they were elected, to introduce them to you. There, there, all three of them are here, if I am right, and I'm going to introduce one by one, if you can stand and wave to acknowledge. We'll start with Anav Hassan from RH King Academy. Thank you. And Victor Jiang from Margano Collegiate Institute. And Indigenous student trustee-elect Celine Ojik from Rosedale Heights School of Arts. Once again, thanks to all three of you for putting your name forward. I know school life is busy, but you've taken the extra effort to represent the students. 239,000 students, according to my notes here, it's probably growing and changing, but your representation and your voice is very critical for our work. In fact, that's what grounds our work, grounds our work in this room. So, thank you very much, and looking forward to working with all of you in the coming year. Trustees, as you know, the Ontario election had happened, and we have a new government. In fact, this government has returned. The Progressive Conservative Party has formed government with majority, and we look forward to working together with them to see how we can support the future of public education in Ontario, but more importantly, within Toronto District School Board. We were pleased to recently host Premier Ford at Albion Heights Junior Middle School for an event. In the coming weeks and months, we hope to connect more with both the premier, but more importantly with the Minister of Education, Minister Honorable Paul Calandra. Following his appointment, I did send a letter, congratulated letter, as well as a letter requesting a meeting as well, hoping we can host him soon at one of our schools, but also more importantly, have some work to do together. So, hopefully we can build that relationship moving forward. All right, other elections, we are now in the federal elections, and we send a letter, and in fact, before I go to federal election, during the provincial election, we sent a letter to all the provincial leaders around some of the items that we have been prioritising over the many advocacy letters, and so pulled them together and sent a letter to all the leaders. Obviously, they were busy to respond at that time, but we wanted to make sure that they knew what our priorities were. So, the same letters, including the request to address the funding, inflation-based funding gap, we had a motion about $1,500 per student. We had sent a letter to all the leaders of the provincial party. Now, for the federal party, as you know, we had few things that we had asked the federal government over the years to address, which includes Indigenous education and the rebuild of the school, student nutrition, childcare, and support for newcomers. So, we combined all those letters and sent the letter to all the leaders of the federal parties as well, so that they know from Toronto District School Board, we would like them to continue to have the focus on those issues. So, these letters and these advocacy work continues with all levels of government. And I'm pleased to say that based on the motion that we had during February 2025, asking for funding advocacy for new Indigenous education school, we sent a letter earlier this month. Elder Dr Duke Redbird and myself sent a joint letter to Canadian Minister of Crown Indigenous Relations and Northern Affairs, and Ontario Ministry of Indigenous Affairs and First Nations and Economic Reconciliation to highlight the urgent need. And this letter went prior to the new government being formed. Once the new government forms and new minister is identified, we will follow up again on those advocacy, not just with a letter, but hoping to have a meeting and hoping to have a bit more interactive conversations to address the thing. The vision is obviously, as many of you know from the discussion, to create a standalone, fully Indigenous building, capapa machua wandering spirit school, honors our collective obligation to Truth and Reconciliation Commission of Canada, and the report calls to action and United Nations Declaration of Rights of Indigenous People. So, this work is important and we'll continue to advocate for it. I want to take, take this moment to thank the Urban Indigenous Community Advisory Committee, Elders Council, and Superintendent Tanya Singh, and everyone else who helped to put this letter together to make sure that it is communicating in the most effective way the importance of committing to the building of this standalone school. Finally, trustees, you know the budget process is starting, so we have a number of town halls and a number of other engagement, and in May, we would probably have a lot more trustees conducting their own ward forums on budget as well. So, we want the community to actually engage and support and ask questions and hold us accountable during those processes as well. So, not only us, the government that funds us as well accountable during those processes. So, we are hoping, you can go to tdsb.on.ca/budget and learn more. As, as I close, I also want to acknowledge some of the trustees who are on leave. We have three trustees who are currently on excused leaves. I want to first I want to first congratulate trustee D. Wadis. He's gotten nomination as a candidate for Member of Parliament in Humber River Black Creek and is currently contesting in the election. So he's on leave during the 2025 federal election campaign. Two other trustees are on parental leave, technically on parental leave, but they're here as well. Trustee Rajas Kullasingam a few months ago welcomed a baby and had a baby. So congratulations, trustee Rajakullasingam. While she's on maternity leave, her commitment brings her to the meeting here, so I'm glad you're here. But we wish you all the best during your leave. And then we also have trustee Sri Skandaraja, who had her second baby and is on maternity leave or parental leave as well. So congratulations to trustee Sri Skandaraja as well. Let's give her a round of applause. She's joining. And if I'm correct, she is also probably joining or was here and will be joining us while the meeting, but they're on maternity leave. So congratulations and we are happy for you and your growing families. Trustees, so that's the end of my report and I hope we can persevere through persevere through the rest of the few months going to the finish line of this academic year. Before I finish, there's the items in the blue folder. I think I can do this sitting down. So there's the blue folder and there's a number of items in the blue folder, and I'm asked to kind of highlight what's in the blue folder. So we have twenty, we have a memorial announcement from April, and then we have the chair's announcements, item eight, that refers to the letters from trustee D. Wadis around the leave of absence. And we also have the revised boardroom seating plan, which I hope is the accurate one because there was a bit of an error. So wherever you are is where you are. Number four, we have student trustees' report. And number five, you have a list of items that matters to be decided without discussion, so items on consent agenda. Number six, we have the fundraising policies amendment, notice of possible amendment. That's from trustee Dawson and trustee King in the folder. There is a revised budget consultation schedule. Please have a look at that as well because there is one date that is changed. So please cross-check all the dates for the revised budget consultation. Number eight, there's also a possible business arising from trustee Earhart and McLean around the inflationary gap in per people funding. This is related to the current funding update. And number nine, notice of motion. This is a combined grades class organization. Trustee Lee and trustee Earhart is moving it on behalf of trustee King and trustee Dawson. And then trustee around leave of absence for trustee Alexandra Alkardman, trustee Laskin and trustee Shan. That's myself will be moving that. So I'm just asked to remind all of you of what's on the blue, in the blue folder, so please have a look. Thank you all. So we now move on to the next item on the agenda. This is actually the reports from trustees appointed to external organization and student trustees. Any trustees here wish to speak from external organization? If not, we'll move on to the student trustee Dawson. Please go ahead with your report.
Thank you. I'm going to be delivering the CNE report and I did have, oh, there we go. So on April 3rd, the Canadian National Exhibition launched this year's Kids Admission Pass Design. She's see on the screen right now. For more than a century, the CNE has had a longstanding tradition of distributing CNE kids passes to school boards and underserved communities. More than 600,000 CNE kids passes are sent out annually to elementary students in the GTA, offering free CNE admission for children ages thirteen and under, totaling upwards of 30 million passes since the program began in 1920. 2024 was the first time students designed the CNE kids pass. And the CNE is so pleased to have had grade seven and eight students from Alexander Muir Gladstone Junior and Senior Public School design this year's pass for the second year of the Student Design Pass Program. The school is located just up the road from the CNE in Ward Nine, and this was a perfect year to select Alexander Muir Gladstone as the school is celebrating their centennial in 2025. What's extra special about this year is that traditionally the CNE has two kids pass designs, one for schools and one for the public. But for 2025, this will be the only design and has been seen across the province. In coordination with the various school boards, passes will be made available to families. I'll report back to the board when the kids' e-passes are available online. Director Latu, Superintendent Altazar, and I were honored to attend the unveiling of the pass at Alexander Muir Gladstone on April 3rd. The students who designed the pass were so proud of themselves and their peers were so supportive and cheering them on. The students explained that each of the children in the design actually represents someone in their class. It was a truly joyful event to celebrate their achievement and the diversity of our great city. Thank you.
Thank you very much trustee Dawson for your report. And CNE Association, we now have the student trustees, student trustee Bell, student trustee Xing, and Indigenous student trustee Westra will be presenting their report.
Alrighty, good evening, everyone. So now it's time for the student trustee report. And to start off, we'll start off with Oste Ako. So I was privileged to be working over the past few months with the Equity Working Group within Oste Ako, a basic collection of student trustees across the province that works within the Equity Working Group. Within this particular working group, we're working towards the development of an equity-based student trustee handbook. This handbook will include resources, motion templates, and overall context for future and current student trustees when it comes to the equity leadership mindset.
Okay, good evening, everyone. It's been a while since I've seen y'all's wonderful faces. But moving on to our topic, the student trustee campaign and selection has now concluded. Thousands of TDSB students in grades seven to eleven voted in the student trustee election. Congratulations to Anav Hassan, a grade eleven student at RH King Academy, and Victor Zhang, a grade eleven student at Mark Garno Collegiate Institute. I'd also like to congratulate Celine Ojig, a student at Rosedale collegiate, height of the arts? Rosedale Heights of the Arts. Thank you. Yeah, that's it. I would like to just congratulate them, sorry.
Congratulations.
So moving on to Student Senate. Earlier this month, the student trustees alongside the Student Senate successfully hosted our annual Grade Nine, Ten Leadership Retreat at Monoclef Outdoor Education Centre. This retreat offered students the opportunity to develop leadership skills, gain insight into the work of Student Senate, and connect with other aspiring young leaders.
Okay, student trustee Bell was invited to guest speak and moderate at the Annual Ontario Public Supervisory Officers Association, or ASPOA for short, held last month at the Sheraton Centre in Toronto. She led the Student Leadership Panel with students from all across the province on the theme of equity in education and delivered a keynote-style speaker's address to the open day events.
Thank you, Darian. Now, moving on to something very special. So in partnership with Superintendent Gala and Superintendent Cannon Carey, I was privileged to co-host the Second Annual Toronto District School Board Women's Day Event at KPMG. So as you know, KPMG is one of the big fours. So it was a privilege to be able to welcome plenty of TDSB students that identify as women in honor of March, which is Women's History Month in early March. So this particular event was one that we hosted last year as well. And it was just a lovely event to be able to welcome students from all across the board, mainly for this event targeting individuals within the Scarborough region and welcome them in person to KPMG. I was privileged to be able to co-host a workshop diving into public speaking and corporate spaces. So it's just lovely to be on such a high floor with students that were so engaged and willing to learn when it comes to that particular piece. The second thing I'd like to talk about is our Second Annual Target Alpha X TDSB Junior Stock Trading Competition. So echoing last year's work with the Ministry of Education's, the Grade Ten Financial Literacy Assessment that was put into place, students from the Toronto District School Board launched last year with Target Alpha, their junior stock trading competition. So last year, we were able to welcome almost 300 middle school students from grades six through eight all across the province and the country overall. So we had students from all the way from British Columbia to GTA to York region, and many of them were TDSB students. So it's really just a secondary run of the entire event, continuing that work that we did last year when it comes to financial literacy and education.
I also just want to take a moment to congratulate student trustee Bell. She was awarded the Mayor's Pam McConnell Award for Young Women in Leadership. This award recognizes only two. This award only recognizes two recipients every year for the outstanding leadership and a proven commitment to their community. The award ceremony was held at Toronto City Hall, where she shared remarks of gratitude to the mayor, members of city council, and the broader community. We are so proud of Angelica and we all know she is so deserving with all her updates that she provides every month. So congratulations.
Okay, next one. The 2025 TDSB International Day of Pink Celebration marked the 35th anniversary of the term Two-Spirit and brought attention to the ongoing fight against bullying and discrimination against two SLGGTP+ communities. I had the pleasure of speaking on the intersection of Indigenous identities and the meaning of the Day of Pink within the community, calling for greater inclusion and understanding. That's it for me.
We're gonna end off with a quote, and it is that "an investment in knowledge and education pays the best interest." So this emphasizes that the important work that each and every one of you are doing will benefit students long after they graduate from the TDSB. Thank you.
Thank you. We want to echo the same thing towards the three of you. Thank you very much for the work you're doing, helping both your generation of students, but also paving the way for the next generation of students. Trustee, student trustee Bell, student trustee Xing, and Indigenous student trustee Westra. Thank you very much for all your work. We will now move on to the next item on the agenda, which is director's leadership report.
Thank you, Chair Shan, and through you, I want to thank trustees for maybe to serve in this role and for the privilege of speaking in this forum to recognize the excellence that I've had the opportunity to see in all of my school visits and in my interactions throughout the board. There is just so much to celebrate and I appreciate the opportunity to do just that in each forum. I must say that it's probably out of order, but I may request to go before the students next time because that is a hard act to follow with all of their accomplishments and to see that excellence on display and to know that that excellence is on display, not just in the board meeting, but in their daily work that they get to report on here. So if we can give them another round of applause because that's excellent. And I did meet one of the new student trustees at a community iftar recently. And I must say that I was part of the fan club, so I did take a selfie. And at some point, that's going to end up on Instagram or somewhere, you know, upcoming. So I was among the first to be part of that fan club. So looking forward to the demonstration of the excellence of your excellence, new student trustees and Indigenous student trustee at the board table. So thank you very much. And trustee Dawson, you stole my thunder, but I'm going to one-up you. This is the poster that was revealed at Alexander Muir Gladstone School just recently. And the president and CEO of the Canadian National Exhibition and his team who were on site celebrating the reveal, sent this on so that we could have this at the board and this was revealed and just so pleased. And one thing that I'd like to add to the great comments that you highlighted, trustee Dawson, is that many, not all, of the students that pulled together the art that's celebrated on this poster are in an intensive support program. And why do I say that? Because this is a demonstration about the capacity, the capabilities, the abilities, the opportunity for excellence when we give all of our students opportunity to excel and succeed. And so now, what is it, over 60,000 of these passes will be handed out, celebrating and recognizing the work of our students. Students that in some domains and in past may have been counted out. But thanks to the opportunities provided by our amazing educators in the TDSB, including those that support or students with special education needs or disabilities, opportunities such as these can reveal this excellence, which is just symptomatic or endemic, emblematic of the excellence that is available to all of our students. So just wanted to share that. Thank you. And I want to highlight unleashing learning. So last Tuesday, I had the opportunity to join more than 1,000 educators on our annual unleashing learning conference. And this event continues to be a powerful space for exploring how technology can enhance student learning, strengthen equity, and prepare young people for a future full of possibilities. This includes all our children and youth, including our students with special education needs and disabilities. With 49 sponsors and a bustling marketplace of digital lead learners, attendees engaged with tools and applications that make an immediate impact on student engagement, hands-on learning, and creative ways to present concepts. Workshops were led by both industry partners and TDSB staff covering topics such as using digital tools for pedagogical documentation in the early years, building a learning culture around digital literacy and citizenship, supporting multilingual learners, and applying design thinking and AI in the classroom. Educators left with actionable strategies, new tools, and expanded networks as we continue to navigate and in the integration, pardon me, of AI in our classrooms and in our practice. And a strong theme throughout the conference was the importance of collaboration. And oftentimes, when we think about technology, we think about the tools. But the tools are vehicles for doing the work that we need to do and to enable possibilities to be accomplished, including again, our students with special education needs that receive opportunities that they may not have had in the past. And yes, I'm going to continue to harp on the work that we are doing and need to continue to do in this area so that all of our students can achieve. So a big thank you to Executive Officer Peter Singh and the IT Services Team and everyone involved in organizing such a rich day of professional learning. And I had the opportunity, even at the end of the day, as folks were leaving too, I just engaged with some educators, teachers, and including a couple from Lewis McCormick School, which is one of our congregated sites, who were talking about the opportunities offered through the conference for them to go back and do really good work. But it didn't matter who I engaged with. They talked about what they were taking away from the conference and what they could do tomorrow in their schools. And it's just wonderful that, again, acknowledging Peter and his team, offering this opportunity for our system across all schools. And it also shows the connection between the corporate functions of the board and work that happens at the students' desk. And if it's not making a difference at the students' desk, if it's not supporting the work of our educators with our students, then it's not work worth doing. And I can tell you that this was work worth doing. So thank you, Peter and your team. And budget update, and trustee Chair Shan spoke about some of these highlights, but just want to highlight that we are in a structural deficit. And we've got a lot of work to do to move towards a balanced budget and that the public has an opportunity to engage and provide input into the process. So as we continue to explore options to balance the budget and weigh the important priorities before us, we are holding budget-specific town halls. A couple have already been held and there are some more upcoming, including 6:30 to 8:30 PM on April 17th and the 20- um and the twenty-third um in our east and west town halls. Um, town halls have been held um in the downtown and the west area. There's also um a town hall for students specifically. So we're encouraging all students to engage uh in providing input into into the process. Um, and uh just moving on, uh there's also a survey that will be distributed um in uh the coming hours um or days perhaps um that will provide opportunity for staff, for the public, for students and for others to um to provide input into the process. So there are multiple opportunities for the public and for stakeholders to um to engage in the process. And um just sharing some more good news, um in March, um the cybersecurity team from William Lane Mackenzie uh Collegiate Institute traveled to Washington DC to compete in the Cyber Patriot um National Finals. In the Cisco Network Challenge, the team configured complex computer networks, tackled technical problems, and completed a hands-on scavenger hunt, building physical network components to uncover clues. The team placed second in the Cisco Challenge and sixth overall. Uh, and an exceptional outcome in a competition that started with, get this, twenty-nine hundred teams. So go TDSB and go um uh Mackenzie CI. I'll um I'll point out that Mackenzie was the only Canadian and um only international team to make it to the finals, uh making um their achievement even that much more remarkable. And next up, uh for them, is the Cyber Titan Finals in May, where they'll aim to reclaim the Canadian uh championship. So congratulations to the team. And um I think uh as I conclude, um I want to reiterate the opportunity and the privilege that I have to be in schools, um seeing again so many examples of excellence, day in and day out, much of it going unrecognized and not talked about enough. And I think that as we go forward, trustees, I look forward to engaging in even more conversations about teaching and learning um in classrooms, uh be those classrooms inside, be those classrooms outdoors, on the land, wherever. Um, because that's where we're going to make a difference, and we need more for conversations to be about the achievement and the well-being of our students always. And um just to share um a couple um a couple more examples. And at this point, I know um the associate directors want to give me the hook, but trustees, if you allow me, just to uh speak to a couple more um um a a couple more examples, just um acknowledging examples of excellence such as the innovative approach to delivering the um mandatory tech credit at top Partdale um CI, which I had the opportunity to see such high engagement um of kids, both those currently in the program and those that have taken it um and are recommending it to to their peers. Um, to looking at at North Albin Collegiate, meeting a young lady who was just knocking it out of the park um in her electrical work, moving towards her certification, and um and just showing excellence in uh all of her tech courses. Uh, to recognizing the work of our administrators who worked so hard along with our folks and people and culture to make sure that our programs are appropriately staffed. And I saw educators that were engaged, deeply engaged, coming in with industry experience and able to demonstrate for students the pathways that they may pursue and um and how to go um how to go about that. To seeing early literacy programs um that are um that are um just so 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 well-developed, well-designed, and to see teachers engaging, collaborating, and working together to improve their practice, recognizing uh the focus on continuous learning. Um, and so many other examples, but I'll stop there. But only to end by saying that in as much as we focus on achievement, um uh uh and and that is absolutely our core um work, um I want to just um pause to recognize um the excellence of our teams that provide support to our schools when they deal with traumatic um events. And uh that was the end of my comments last um uh uh last board meeting. And um there was a period of time um over the past um month where um uh three in three of our school communities, we lost um students. And you can imagine the impact um of that um on not just the families, but on the entire school family, the entire school communities. What I've learned about TDSB is that um in moments such as those, the entire team rises to the challenge. And I want to thank our caring and safe staff for what you do. I want to thank our superintendents for what you do. I want to thank our principals for the leadership you provide in these moments of trauma, when nothing else matters because we've lost lives. And I want to thank our educators for what you do. And I want to end by reflecting on an email I received at the end of a night on one such occasion. The email said, "The police have left, and they've released the classroom to our staff." And it was our caretakers who were going into that space at the end of the night. And this speaks to the teamwork that is required to make sure all our schools and our students do well and are well. And so I want to thank the entire TDSB team for the work that you do to center students and to center schools in those moments when they need us the most. Thank you, and that's my report.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Director, for the report. Trustees, uh we now move on to Declaration of Possible Conflict of Interest. Any trustees would like to declare any conflict of in interest at this point of time? Okay, seeing or hearing none, we will move on to the next item, which is Matters to Be Decided Without Discussion. As I mentioned, there is a page inside your blue folder that lists all the items that are going to be moved without discussion. So can I have a mover and a seconder, trustee Hassan, moving? Can I have someone seconded, trustee Goss, seconded by trustee Goss? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, that's carried. Thank you very much. So the next item on the agenda, then it's fourteen point two, which is the official election results for by-election in Don Valley West and uh appointment to the Programs and School Services Committee for trustee Klein. So I'm gonna ask governance uh team, Mr. Joseph Towers, to introduce the item.
Of trustee held by Rachel Shunuslin was vacated on November sixth, twenty twenty-four upon confirmation of her election to the City Council of Toronto as city councillor. With the departure of trustee Shunuslin, there's a vacancy also rose of the Program and School Services Committee. The city of Toronto, city clerk's office has posted the uh attached results of the by-elections held on on March third. And C C Klein has been declared elected as a member of the Toronto District School Board for the term March fourth, twenty twenty-five to October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-six. It is appropriate at this time to appoint trustee Klein to the position to the vacant position on the Program and School Services Committee. Thank you.
Moved by trustee Laskin, seconded by trustee Patel. I don't want to put you on the spot, trustee Klein. If you wish to speak, uh please, you can do so at this point of time before we move the item.
Thank you for this opportunity. Uh, it's it's wonderful to be here, but I want to thank the people of Don Valley West Ward eleven for trusting me and electing me to this position. I actually started my career in Don Valley West. My very first job out of my first degree out of university was in the constituency office of John Godfrey, federal Member of Parliament in Don Valley West. So this is a community that I have served before. And one of the things that I learned from John is that, first of all, constituents loved him. And one of the reasons why is that he he knew how to build bridges. He knew how to talk to anybody, and he knew how to listen to everybody. And so uh this is what I what I aspire to be like in public service. And and uh I'm I'm here. Uh, it's an honor to be here with all of you, and I'm proud to serve with all of you. And uh just thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you very much. Uh, congratulations again. Right, so all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, that's carried. Thank you. We will now move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the Extension of External Member to the Audit Committee. Um, can I ask the director to introduce the item?
Thank you through you, Chair, over to Associate Director Stacey Zooker.
Uh, thank you and through the chair. Uh, as trustees know, we we do have an audit committee. And the audit committee is governed by Ontario Regulation three sixty-one ten. And as part of that regulation, the comp it it determines the composition of the audit committee. So the the section three point one point three says that if a board has more than fifteen members, meaning more than fifteen um trustees, then the audit committee shall consist of seven members, including four board members and three persons who are not board members. So those are our external members of our audit committee. Uh, the external members of our audit committee, it also talks about uh who is eligible and the types of um uh characteristics that we're looking for, not characteristics, but uh requirements that they have and accounting, financial management, and other relevant uh business experience being one of them. So when we look for external members, we do a fairly extensive search for our external members. And currently, one of our three members, uh their term ended on uh January thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. So part of their term, it's a three-year term, there is an opportunity to extend. Um, the the external member is uh Naveen Balakrishnan. And Naveen has been a member um for the last three years. And this motion is to extend Naveen's term for another two years. He has agreed to this term. Uh, and we are hoping that trustees uh are able to approve uh this um extension. Thank you through the chair.
We'll now move on to questions from trustees. Trustee Laskin.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, as Chair of Audit Committee, I can uh commend Naveen for his dedication in serving the role, and I'm happy to move this.
Okay, can I have a seconder for this recommendation? Trustee Williams, any further questions, comments from trustees? Okay, seeing no further comments or questions, uh, so fans, all those in favor?
Swisk and the Roger in favor?
Thank you. Anyone opposed? Okay, that's carried. Thank you. Trustees, we move on to the next item. Number fifteen is uh Matters postponed from a previous meeting. It seems like a, sorry.
It possible to announce which items we will be dealing with tonight?
Yeah.
We never made that clear for the public uh who's in the room or who are watching. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll read the items that we will be dealing with. Um, so so that you know, number fifteen, Matters postponed from previous meeting. Finance Budget Enrollment Committee Report, number three, Part B, January thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. There's a business arising from their response to Ministry of Education's twenty twenty-five capital priorities announcement. So that will be dealt with next. After that, it will be fifteen point two, Program and School Service Committee, Report number two, Part B, February fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. This one is the Math Achievement Action Plan, Report two uh for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. These two items were pulled out of the consent, but we didn't get to uh discuss that at that meeting. So it's being brought to this meeting. And uh the items that have been pulled out of consent agenda from this set of uh committees, uh we move on to sixteen point two, from Governance and Policy Committee, uh Report number four, March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. We will be uh dealing with P zero two one, fundraising policy phase five. Um, so that discussion will follow. After that, we will move on to sixteen point four, Finance Budget Enrollment Committee Report, number six, March twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-five. This is uh sixteen point four four four, which is the structural deficit update. So we will be uh discussing the structural deficit update and uh and then we will move on to sixteen point five. Number two, sixteen point five is Planning and Priorities Committee Reports uh from April ninth, twenty twenty-five. Number two is Toronto Lands Corporation's Multi-Year Strategic Plan, Pathways to Foundational Schools in Our Communities. And finally, uh from uh the same meeting, sixteen point five Planning and Priorities Meeting from April ninth, we also have uh item number nine pulled out of consent, which is twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five uh Climate Action Plan. So those are the items that we will be discussing today. That's helpful. Thank you. All right, so um we will move on to number fifteen, fifteen point one. Ma- fifteen is Matters postponed from previous meeting, fifteen point one, Finance Budget Enrollment Committee Report, number three. There's a business arising, response to Ministry of Education, twenty twenty-five capital priorities announcement. Now, we just need a mover and a seconder for that. Trustee Williams, trustee Hassan, all those in favor? That's carried. Thank you very much. We move on to the next one, which is the Math Achievement Action Plan, Report two for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Uh, I'd like to ask the director if you would like to introduce the staff who might want to speak on this.
Uh, thank you through you, um Chair, to um executive, pardon me, Associate Director Luis Zarisco.
Uh, thank you mu- very much. And through the chair, it's a wonderful opportunity to be uh focusing once again on our Math Achievement Action Plan, Report two. I'm going to be inviting uh our Executive Superintendent Diana Pangiotopoulos uh to be contributing as well as our System Superintendent Liz Holder. Over to you.
Thank you, and good evening, trustees. This report was the second of three math achievement action plan updates for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. It highlighted the efforts underway to support mathematics learning and achievement at the TDSB as well as the next steps to further support these actions. Summary and context. The Mathematics Achievement Action Plan Update aligns with the strategic directions within the multi-year strategic plan and also highlights professional learning offerings, educator attendance, and growth in educator confidence to teach mathematics, the increasing use of digital tools to enhance student learning of mathematical concepts in math learning partnership schools, student perceptions related to math confidence, importance, and understanding, and budget implications for the TDSB. Attendance and impact of professional learning sessions. During the fall of twenty twenty-four, five hundred and nine TDSB educators representing eighty-nine MLP schools and one hundred and thirty non-MLP schools attended at least one session of the five professional learning series offered by the Central Math Department. Exit surveys at these professional learning sessions indicated that between seventy to two percent and ninety percent of participants express increased confidence in teaching mathematics after attending these professional learning offerings. Additionally, among the educators who attended TDSB subsidized math AQ courses and completed the exit survey, seventy-five percent of them indicated that completion of the course led to a considerable or large improvement in their confidence to teach mathematics. As of February fifth, we had six hundred and thirty TDSB educators registered to attend central professional learning offerings, and that number has grown to almost twelve hundred TDSB educators. We have had some challenges, and discussions with schools indicated that central professional learning offerings should have been launched slightly later in the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year in order to improve the feasibility of educator attendance and enhanced registration numbers. The following strategies are among those being leveraged to improve educator attendance at these sessions, and they have been working. There has been more advanced and direct communication with superintendents, administrators, and teachers about upcoming professional learning sessions. There have been detailed discussions between There have been detailed discussions between superintendents of education and administrators about attendance during math-focused school visits. There has also been broader sharing of the impact of professional learning sessions on educators' confidence in teaching mathematics. And there has been new and exciting offerings related to promoting multiplicative thinking, algebraic reasoning and rethinking learning disabilities and mathematics. We have also mitigated the impact of occasional teacher shortages by making arrangements for occasional teacher coverage well in advance of professional learning sessions. We also want to report that during the period between fall two thousand and twenty four to now, TDSB math learning partners who work to support math learning priority schools have participated in a range of professional learning sessions across the district. Student math confidence. Math perception data points to an increase in student math confidence over the past year. The largest increase in math confidence was noted among grade nine students. Importance of math to students. Students in all three focus grades, grades three, six and nine, believe math is important to them. It's important to note that students have maintained their perceptions of the importance of mathematics as they have progressed through their educational journeys. Student understanding of math instruction. Students were asked if they can understand most of the math they're taught. About two thirds or sixty-five percent indicated they can. Grade six students were most likely to agree with that statement at seventy percent, while grade nine students were least likely to agree at sixty-one percent. There was very little difference in levels of disagreement between grades. We are continuing to focus on implementing high-impact instructional strategies that will enable all students to experience a sense of belonging and understand the mathematics being taught to them in TDSB schools. This includes working collaboratively with educators across the TDSB to implement direct instruction, universal design for learning approaches, center student identities and help them to make real-world connections to mathematics. And now we'll talk about digital tool use. Overall, more than half or fifty-two percent of student respondents indicated that they have used digital math tools to support their learning. The grade with the greatest proportion of digital math tool users was grade six at sixty-one percent, followed by grade three at fifty-four percent and grade nine students at thirty-eight percent. Across all grades, the most-used digital math tool was Knowledge Hook. In elementary grades, this was followed by Brainy Camp. For grade nine students, the second-most-used digital math tool was Stasmos. There have been no changes to the funding implications that were shared in the first Math Achievement Action Plan Update. And a third, the third and final Math Achievement Action Plan Update will be presented to you in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions from trustees? Trustee Laskin?
Uh, thank you very much for you, Mr. Chair. I was really interested in the student math confidence and the fact that grade nine had the highest spike, um, but it's still less than sixty percent. So my question is, do you have an understanding of what led to the jump, however, in grade nine from forty-two to fifty-eight over the course of that year? Was there a correlation to the professional learning of the math teachers themselves? And what percentage are we looking for in terms of students in the TDSB feeling confident in math? What, what's our goal that we're striving for? That's for you, Mr. Chair, to staff. Thank you.
Do you want to get one of the staff members to respond to?
Thank you for that question. I will begin with the last question in terms of what percentage of students we want to be confident in mathematics because of our board's commitment to equity and inclusion. That number would be one hundred percent. We want all TDSB learners to be fully confident math learners. And so in terms of what has led to the jump, we need to share that the scale used with the grade nine question changed somewhat. The "I am good at math" question changed for grade nine students. Grade nine students were given five different response options, whereas the grade three and six students only had three response options. And so we are continuing to monitor those numbers closely. We are hopeful that due to the strategies we have implemented in terms of helping students experience joy, belonging and a sense of well-being in mathematics classroom, that their confidence will continue to improve. But we are certainly monitoring those numbers closely.
And thank you, if I may, uh, add to the response. Through you, Chair, I know that the board of trustees are very keen to be have staff sharing, uh, what I'll call targets or goals. Uh, we're using this year, as you know, to be, uh, taking the report that you approved in principle in regards to how we show progress in the action areas of the multi-year strategic plan. We're gathering data for this year. Um, and coming to, uh, PSSC in May will be a calendar of all of our reports going forward, and, uh, there is a statement in that report that indicates when we're presenting a report to you showing the baseline data, we will be setting goals for the system in each of the areas. So please know that we will be more specific in, uh, what your question is, trustee Laskin, and what is a realistic goal to be taking that baseline data and moving it in each of our schools. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much. So my, my follow-up then is, is thank you for that. Because for me, I obviously I want all kids to succeed, but feeling they can, I think is a really important piece of the puzzle for math because for so long, um, we didn't put the emphasis on belonging and feeling that we could do the math as opposed to just marking tests whether you pass or fail. Thinking you can do something, I think, has a, uh, you know, that, that belonging subject within our multi-year strategic plan, I think is a really important shift, system shift, that it's not necessarily about EQA scores. It's about kids believing they can do it, and then our teachers doing the professional learning for their competencies to help the kids learn the math. So I'm, uh, I really thank the, uh, efforts of the staff in the math department and, uh, look forward to the next report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee Laskin. I have trustee McLean and then trustee Klein. Trustee McLean?
Thank you. And through the chair, um, I want to thank staff for the report. It's always, um, it's always great to, to hear, uh, reports of progress and, um, particularly in important areas such as mathematics. I'm going to build a little bit on my colleague's question. If I understood what you shared, the grade nines, their confidence level went up, but then when you asked them about their ability to do the subject matter, they were the least confident. So I'm trying to marry those two thoughts. I'm trying to understand. Overall, they were excited, but then when you put the math test in front of them, they were, they were, they were less confident. And so I'm trying to understand that cor- or if there's a correlation between the two. I can withdraw it if it's.
Uh, pardon us, we weren't, uh, sure if you were concluding, uh, trustee McLean. So, uh, thank you for the question, and I'll encourage my colleagues to, to jump in. Uh, confidence in math is, um, and I'm going to be channeling, uh, Dr. Cameron, it's, uh, sometimes not necessarily correlated to achievement uh, in math. Um, and one of our goals is to encourage students to know that even if there is a challenge before them that is hard, that causes struggle or dissonance cognitively, that they know how to persevere and they know how to access different skills and strategies that have been, um, have been taught and practiced. And they've got what it takes to figure it out. Um, and through repeated, uh, successes in, in finding answer, may not be the right answer, but their strategies are fantastic. Um, that, that confidence and that love of mathematics, uh, builds. Uh, so it's, um, it's definitely a data point for us to be monitoring that the ministry asks for us to be monitoring and reporting, uh, frequently. But we need to cognitively show, uh, the achievement for our students is connected to their confidence. And their achievement when soaring, if their confidence reduces to engage in that self-talk, that negative self-talk and have it dissipate. So that's a convoluted answer to say, um, it, it's, it's challenged. It's not directly related to, uh, achievement. Thank you.
Um, thank you, and, uh, through you, Chair. And I was very encouraged by the high number of professional development and the high number of those signing up for the next round. Do I understand from the past that, um, the province has subsidized some of this professional development?
Uh, thank you, and I will, uh, defer to, uh, Diana and to Liz to be providing some of the details. And once again, we ask for you to consider advocacy, uh, for professional, uh, learning, for, uh, mathematics, for our teachers. The ministry has uh, really shifted, um, uh, their focus in providing funding for our math learning partners, uh, which is working. We are seeing the partner alongside our educators. Is job embedded, it is in the classroom, it is modeling, uh, monitoring, is proving to be a very effective means, uh, to be supporting our educator efficacy, as well as, uh, student learning. It's a challenge right now because of, uh, still we're in post-pandemic and filling, uh, absences for our educators remains a challenge that providing funding for pull-out professional learning, I think, is a strategy that the ministry sees as a challenge for boards to, uh, embrace right now. So more professional funds for, um, um, math learning partners would be very, very welcome. And, uh, you'll remember that we, uh, through, through your leadership have advocated to the ministry for that. And to continue to champion for that funding, uh, is most appreciated.
Good. Thank you, and thank you for that. And, um, through you, Chair. And I, I think we should be fair and give credit where credit is due. So I want to thank the ministry for their investment in the math learning partners, and we're encouraged by the progress. So I, I think it's, it's great that they've invested in this way and, um, I think it's important to recognize that and give credit where it's due. Because, um, it's not a position I take very often, and it's not one I'm going to hold very long because the agenda has other items in it. But when they get it right, we should say that they get it right and, and they, and they move in a, in a positive manner. We should recognize that, and it's, it's clearly worked here, and it's having a positive effect. And I think it's fair to recognize that. I thank staff for the encouraging report.
Thank you, uh, trustee McLean. Trustee Klein?
Uh, thank you. And through the chair, I, I think, um, it was further to trustees Laskin and McLean's comments. I think this was probably really addressed, uh, by the Associate Director in response to trustee McLean, but as a former grade three, mostly grade five teacher, uh, math anxiety is very real. It, it, it has nothing to do, can they or can't, I mean, they just are too afraid to because they think they can't do it. And I don't see that in any other subject, even literacy. But I saw it in math. And like, they feel that they can overcome literacy. They really can, but math just seems to be that. And I'm sure that you see that too. So I, I, I mean, I, I think you pretty much, uh, covered it already is how we're building the confidence, but I, it is absolutely something real, and I'm glad that you're, uh, that, that you're taking it as something that is quite serious because I think that that is the key to, to, uh, to enhancing our achievement. It's, it really is confidence. Thank you so much.
Thank you, trustee Klein. Trustee Lee?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say, first of all, thank you to all of our staff for focusing on math. Uh, it will help our students become more successful, and I am so glad we're talking about education as the first order of business. You have all done some really good work. Uh, you know, I appreciate it. I have some questions I'd like to, uh, to have more clarification on. When I am looking at the survey results, I see that between grade three, six and nine, our students have similar beliefs on the importance of math. They have similar understanding, uh, on the level math is taught. And then they all have similar beliefs that if they try hard, they can or cannot succeed. But I see two data points that have significant discrepancies. The first is a data point is on the enjoyment of math. Although, you know, our kids understand the importance of math across all three grade levels, the, the enjoyment, uh, the enjoyment of math decreases from seventy-five percent in grade three to fifty-two percent in grade six and down to forty percent in grade nine. So that's my first question to get more understanding on your opinion on why that might be. And the second question is on the use of digital math tools. Somehow our elementary school kids, uh, more than half of them use digital tools. But by the time they get to grade nine, only thirty-eight percent of them have said that they use digital tools. So I also like to get a sense from you on why that is as well. Thank you.
Uh, thank you for the question, as always, uh, through the chair. Very, very thoughtful and data-driven. So thank you very much, trustee, uh, Lee. In response to your questions from grade three to six to nine, and I want to build on trustee, uh, Klein's response. Our students', um, math, math phobia, uh, is something that we battle. Mathematic concepts become more challenging. So I think that's part of, uh, what we see in the data. I think it's a, it's an important question that you're posing for us to, uh, elevate student voice more intentionally so that we can hear directly from our students, um, and be asking the question, how can we make you feel more confident? Because we want to show you how hard and how well you are achieving. And do not think about, um, the fact that it's, that it's difficult. Sometimes, sometimes it is, but you've got the skills and the problem solving to, uh, persevere and to figure it out, and it's a beautiful thing. So thank you for the question, and, um, what we'll do next time is to elevate some of the voice that we hear from students to include the detail to capture their reflections for you. But that is, that is our speculation and that is our observation, uh, as educators. In regards to digital tools, we think about the use, and I'm putting my educator hat on, we think about the use of manipulatives and digital tools in an elementary way. I think that this data points to us the importance of accessing digital tools and, and working with our partners in the, um, in the computer areas in our, in our partner with, um, who are creating the digital tools to show the application to, uh, more complicated concepts that, uh, are introduced in that are introduced in higher grades in, in very meaningful ways. And we know that there are a ton of products that particularly now with AI that can be laid over the task of creating 3D models, of, of having the challenge of engaging in Minecraft and so on. Those count, but they may not yet be connected to mathematical concepts. So I think this again is a goal area for really embedded curriculum connection. So thank you for the question and more to come on that. I invite Liz and Diana to please comment further.
Thank you. In the central math department, we have been implementing some very intentional steps to increase the use of digital tools at all levels. So for example, we had 95 secondary educators consisting of administrators and teachers participate in the secondary leadership symposium. At that, those sessions, there were east and west sessions. They were facilitated by the program coordinator for the math department in collaboration with math learning partners. So they were very intentional about modeling the use of digital tools to increase student understanding of math concepts. We have also been communicating with parents. We did create a math newsletter and that was distributed to all TDSB parents through TDSB connects at the beginning of March. Within that newsletter are all the digital tools with links available to TDSB students. So we are also hoping that that will motivate students to be more engaged in the use of digital tools. In terms of looking at learning disabilities and mathematics, we realize we need to do a lot of work in helping students identify their strengths and leverage into strengths to address their needs. And so we currently have 29 educators registered for a learning disabilities and mathematics professional learning session. So these are just some of the strategies we have been, been implementing to increase student math confidence as well as their use of digital tools.
Thank you for those answers through, through Mr. Chair to staff. I just want to say one last thing. I think it is important for us to just focus on this data a little bit. Between for the students who indicated that they do not like math, 22% of students in grade six said they don't like it. 23% of students in grade nine said they don't like it. So 15 student is not going to like math. That's fine. Not everyone's going to like math. But the part that said, I am not sure increased from 26 to 37%. And I believe if we work on it, some of those students can change their mind to like math more, be it introducing more digital tools for them. Because we have seen the data say suddenly they got to high school, we stop allowing them to use digital tools, right? Maybe that'll help. So there are things in my opinion that we can do to get the not, not sure group of students to I like math. And I, I, I have confidence that we can do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I think you've made again, an excellent point. We do need to continue to engage our students with the math. But our first step to do that is to make sure that our teachers feel extraordinarily confident with a variety of math tools. And so we are taking those steps and we'll continue to do that for the remainder of this year and into next year to build their capacity so that they can ensure that students are using them in classrooms on a regular basis. So not only during EQIO, but on, on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I, if I may, part of what we are trying to, to bring to build that confidence is joy. Math, math is absolute joy. So as I do, I pose a question, what did zero say to eight? Nice belt. Thank you.
Thank you very much, staff and trustees. Can I have a mover and a second to receive this report? Trustee Lee, trustee Gos, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? That's carried. Thank you, trustees. The next item is the GPC item on fundraising policy from March. I already see hands going up. Thank you. If, I think we have a motion that's coming up from the GPC, but I'd like to ask the staff to see if the director would like to add any comments and questions.
Thank you, Chair. And, and through you, we'll ask associate director Stacey Zooker to make some preliminary comments.
Thank you through the chair. So tonight staff are bringing forward and brought forward to GPC, the fundraising policy for approval. And at that meeting and since that meeting, there have been a lot of questions about the information or I guess what could be considered lack of information that staff provided to trustees on the March 19th, 2025 GPC meeting. So I just wanted to clarify what was provided and why, and walk through a little bit of the timelines associated with the policy because it has been a long time. So the policy was first developed over 20 years ago. And this is the first time that it has been reviewed. And so the fundraising policy was brought to GPC initially for approval in March 2024. And at that time, there were significant changes, including updated definitions, alignment with ministry guidelines and a commitment to equity through a proposed system equity fund. There was significant public consultation that took place prior to the policy, including a survey and a PIAC working group. And the policy that was proposed reflected the results of the consultation. And with regards to the system priorities fund, section 2.1, sorry, 6.2.1 of the proposed policy in March 2024 stated, "To facilitate improved equity of resources among schools, the system priorities fund will be maintained to redirect undesignated donations from external sources and/or schools to voluntarily direct support to surplus school generated funds." And then section 2.2, point two stated that a process for the allocation of the system priorities fund will be determined by the accompanying fundraising procedure. So at that time, so in March 2024, trustees passed a motion, one that options for mandatory contributions to the system priorities fund over a certain threshold of fundraised, of funds raised be added to policy 21 fundraising. And that the director include information on the following. And it, it was related to school councils making contributions to the system priorities fund and how the contributions to the system priority fund are being simplified and promoted within school councils. So for part B of that motion, which was providing the information, it will be provided at the June FBEC meeting as part of the 2324 school budget and school generated funds report. And that's an annual report. So that will be additional information that's provided. So for part A of that motion, and that's what we talked about on March 19th at GPC, staff indicated that the contributions to the system priority fund over a certain threshold would not be advisable based on the guiding principles from the ministry and the requirements for transparency and accountability. And since what the trustees had asked for was not advisable, in order to ensure that the policy provided direction regard, with regards to the system priority fund, staff requested direction from the trustees regarding mandatory or voluntary contributions to update the policy appropriately and, and to ensure that the policy again, that has been not been updated in 20 years moved forward. So staff noticed and, and it makes sense that trustees had a lot of questions that would have helped them make this decision. And since staff had not been able to provide, had been not been asked to provide the information and questions were not shared ahead of time, it was also obvious that there was frustration with the information that was available. So there have been a number of questions that have been asked since this time and additional information has been provided that has only led to more questions. So staff would be happy to and can provide additional information if trustees feel that it is required to make this decision. So I just wanted to, to, to make sure that trustees realize that or understand that if, if we are asked to provide additional information, if you need more information to make the decision, and I'm not saying that you do or you don't, I'm just saying if you do, we are happy to provide it. But it was not provided because that was not the initial ask. The initial ask was, can you provide information about system priorities, a mandatory contribution over an amount which we said was not available or not advisable? So with that, we did leave the decision up to trustees in order to again determine mandatory or voluntary that will help us to finalize the policy so that it can be approved. And I will turn it back to the chair for, for that discussion. Thank you.
For trustees on the list, any other trustees, let me know. Trustee King, trustee Dawson, trustee Hassan and trustee Lee and trustee Laskin and trustee Pay. So trustee McLean. Okay, so we'll start and trustee Klein. Okay, so I'll read, read the list again. Trustee King, trustee Dawson, trustee Hassan, trustee Lee, trustee Laskin, trustee Pay, trustee McLean, trustee Klein. Trustee King, go ahead.
Thank you through the chair and good evening, everyone. Thank you, staff, for just the recap of how we got here. There's obviously been a, quite a few conversations, many perspectives that have been heard. And I think, you know, through those conversations, there've been some common points of agreement that I actually think were important to ground this conversation and to remind us of some context. So I just want to remind us, we agree that public education should be fully and sustainably funded through the provincial government, full stop. Instead, we're always grappling with the shortfall of funding to the tune of 1,500 per student, the fallout of those unmet needs. And we're in a place where we've normalized relying on fundraising to augment school budgets. In some cases, the fundraising is more than the school budget itself. We also agree that these are challenging times and we agree about the economic disparities across the city within our wards as trustees and even at the neighborhood level. I'm speaking here today from the child poverty capital of this country. One in five children under 18 are living in poverty. If you do the math and extrapolate that based on our student population, that's over 47,000 students whose families are struggling with housing insecurity, food insecurity and other basic needs. Needs that are foundational to wellbeing and to learning, the learning that the director so eloquently spoke to earlier. It's an unfortunate fact that the depth of poverty in low income families has increased considerably. So it's not just that more people are living in poverty. The depths of that poverty are increasing. We also agree that equity is a guiding principle throughout all areas of our strategic plan. And we want to be able to provide equal opportunities for students. While fundraising is a very well-intended practice and it's a valued part of our school community experience, we also see how it can exacerbate those inequities. People for Education, they speak to this in one of their reports where they talk about schools in high income neighborhoods that are more likely to use their fundraising money for technology, for library resources, for classroom and lab materials. Whereas in low income neighborhoods, they're more likely to be used for nutrition programs and field trips. And we heard this from the delegates when they spoke as well. We heard them name drama programs, arts programs and other enrichment opportunities. Those enrichment opportunities are great. Sports, arts, clubs, those community programs, they all have a really positive impact on mental health, on emotional health. And ultimately what we want is for more of our students to have those kinds of experiences regardless of what their, their living circumstances are and if they are experiencing higher needs. The reality is that we're still making sure that kids have food throughout the day, warm clothes in the winter and that they can join their classmates on a field trip and not get left behind. This is very clear in my ward where I see school generated funds that range from under 10K to over 100K. And where there are incredible students and teachers in every single building, but the experiences and the enrichment that they are getting the, the, the opportunity to experience is not the same. The opportunities and experiences they've had by the time they graduate grade eight are not the same. So many of the families that we've heard from, that I've spoken to, they're, they're quite eager to see a policy where there is a small portion that is automatically reinvested to support specific priorities and school communities with the greatest needs, whoever and wherever they are. I think where we've been challenged to find more agreement is exactly as our associate director said, it stems from the lack of clarity and common understanding around some of those key details. What percentages are we talking about? Where are the funds going? How will they be accessed and dispersed? So clearly we need to respond to, to some of those questions as part of our considerations. And I believe that with the motion that's coming and the amendments that are suggested, that we can satisfy those very valid inquiries. So I just want to thank everybody for the constructive feedback that's gone into all of these conversations. And I know I'm going to hear from colleagues as well and we'll have some, some proposals to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee King, trustee Dawson.
Thank you. Through the chair, today I'm speaking in support of automatic fundraising contributions to a system priority fund. Over the course of the last few weeks, I've heard from many, many parents and school councils in Ward nine on this issue. There are a few loud voices who are opposed, but the overwhelming majority support the proposal for automatic contributions. In fact, fundraising equity was actually a topic that I was frequently asked about when I was campaigning and knocking on doors. So I'm very happy to see this, this coming to board now. And I figured what better way to prove the point that this program is badly needed to address inequity than to quote some of the letters that I've received from the Ward nine community? And I'll start with a parent's account of a conversation he had with his child. When Jude's dad asked what they thought of giving $100 from 10,000 to other schools who can't raise as much as their school can, they replied, "That's silly. We should give them $1,000." Jude is in grade five. I asked my own daughter, also in grade five, what she thought, and she did not hesitate to say the same thing. The kids get it. A petition called Reduce Inequities in Public Education, Support a Fairer TDSB Fundraising Parent Fundraising Policy was created by parents in Ward nine. The petition which supports automatic fundraising contributions has garnered 697 signatures since it was launched on March 28th, and the number continues to climb. During his delegation, Joseph Taylor said he was stopped by multiple parents on the playground and received emails from many more thanking him for sharing the petition and expressing their support. He went on to say, "From our family's perspective and many of our friends and fellow parents and caregivers in our school community, we're very happy to contribute to a fund, knowing it will be distributed in an equitable manner." In fact, he said, "Knowing it will be distributed in equitable manner means we are happy to contribute more and would be happy for the percent allocation to be much higher than the suggested 1% to 2%." Helen, a parent of two TDSB children in Ward nine states, "Equity is not a matter of personal preference, it is a collective obligation." "We continue to see schools with greater fundraising capacity able to provide students with upgraded technology, expanded programming, outdoor learning spaces and mental health supports, while other schools in the same district struggle to fund the basics." "These disparities aren't just unfortunate, they're systemic and they're getting worse. The differential in fundraising is the result of economic and structural privilege. And unless we act with intention, these inequities will continue to divine students' educational experiences based solely on their postal code." Nora, the vice chair of the General Mercer School Council, provides a real life example of these dynamics at play in her model school community. Nora says General Mercer is a school with strong community and lovely staff, but struggling finances. "We lack proper sports equipment and offer almost no extracurricular programs. Our school council was restarted from scratch two years ago after being inactive entirely for years. The issue is not a lack of caring families, but a lack of time from parents who are often working multiple jobs." Last week, I asked each delegate who opposed automatic contributions to list out the kinds of initiatives they'd supported through fundraising. We heard things like Chromebooks, smart boards, busing for field trips, math manipulatives, guest speakers and many more enrichment activities that were paid for by fundraising dollars. "Colleagues, I encourage you tonight to do what is morally and ethically right by our students and vote for automatic contributions to a system priority fund. It is a fraction of the overall funds raised that would go a long way for students who don't currently benefit from the..." who don't currently benefit from their parents and caregivers having the time, privilege, and access to fundraise." And with that, I would like to propose some amendments.
So if we can get the amendments on the screen.
Thank you.
So with the introduction of these amendments, we have a new list that will be created for speakers. And I have trustee Lee, trustee Laskin. And trustee Dawson, do you want to finish your time? Or do you want to?
I can just jump right to the amendment if we're...
Yeah, yeah.
Can I speak to the amendment? Okay. So first of all, thank you, colleagues, for your collaboration, extensive collaboration on these amendments, for those of you who participated.
Sorry, excuse, it's a bit of a confusion. Just checking if this is new five minutes. Ms. Joseph Dawes thinks it's not new five minutes for the amendments.
Okay, so...
Yeah, 47 seconds. So we'll hold that time for now, but just...
Am I talking for 47 seconds or for five minutes?
Yeah, that's what we are trying to clarify. So just hold up. Give us a minute.
I don't need five minutes, but...
No, no, there is a motion on the floor from GPC. Nobody move that. We can move that first. So this is an amendment. So just hold on for a second, trustee Dawson. Can I have somebody to move and second the main motion that is coming from GPC first?
Oh, there we go.
And then this amendment trustee, Rajak Lasting, I'm a trustee King. So the main motion is on the floor. Now your motion is an amendment, and she'll speak for five minutes with the amendment. Okay, go ahead. You're speaking on the amendment. You get five minutes.
Okay, okay. I probably won't take up the whole five minutes. But you know, these amendments are meant to bring clarity and transparency to some of the questions that the public and we have had around the automatic donation program. If you could please re-project the amendments. Can you please put the amendments back up? Thank you. So the first clause is looking to bring clarity to the percentage of net fundraising that we would include in this program. Also, we're looking for staff to provide us with something that is simple for schools and school councils to implement. We are looking to utilize current resources to administer this fund and exempting of capital projects. So an example of that would be the Wandering Spirit School and the fundraising happening there. And also, we would like to understand, you know, what are the needs or initiatives that this type of fund would support? And how can school communities become engaged in the allocation of those funds? So I first would like to just put it to staff for their thoughts. I had emailed these in advance to no response. So I would just like to understand how staff are feeling about these amendments. And if we need to break at all to have a discussion and refine these amendments, then that would be something I would be open to as well.
Would staff like to respond to the amendments? And anything you would like to add to that? Correct?
Thank you, Chair, and through you. Apologize. Thank you, Chair, and through you. I think if we can accommodate a short break to consult with staff, that would be appreciated.
Great. So we'll take a 10-minute recess to get staff to respond to some of them. And I think it was sought earlier. It didn't completely happen. So it gives a 10-minute time to do that. So we'll take a 10-minute recess and connect back again.
Trustees, please have a seat. Trustees, if I can request all of you to take your seats. Okay. Trustee, trustees, take your seat. We're gonna get started. Okay. We have an amendment on the floor from trustee Dawson, seconded by trustee King. And the amendments are, maybe trustee Dawson, if you want to speak to the revised amendments that's worked together with this. Yeah, but you have to introduce. When you introduce, then it comes to you as well. It's being edited as we speak, so.
Edited, okay.
Yeah. And there is a, I don't know if it's a broken door or an open door straight ahead outside. I don't know if somebody went to try closing it, but.
It is freezing. I don't know.
Um, we have, I hope it's not part of the Enbridge saving that we got. It was not closing, that's why, oh.
It's not closing. Something to mitigate my hot flashes.
Yeah.
I know, I'm just kidding. Are we live? No?
Thank you. Okay, so we have trustee Lee and trustee Laskin on the amendment, but I guess we need to wait till it's on the screen.
Can I, can I speak to the amendments?
The changes? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you know what the changes are, can you speak to it so that we save some time?
Okay, can I, okay, perfect. Thank you, trustees and staff, for your patience while we work this out together. And really appreciate the support from staff on this one. We've made some changes to capture the ask a bit better. So it is to approve the automatic donations. And also for the director to consider, including in the procedure, the following things that are listed. So again, just to spell out, we'd like to set some parameters around the percentage. We'd like it to be simple for schools to implement. Number three should actually have been taken out and moved down, right? Sorry, we don't have it exactly, but let's leave it there for now. Offering examples of specific needs or initiatives. So we, we want to understand what exactly the funds will be contributed for. And also allowing potentially, if it is deemed possible, for schools to have some choice around that. So I think we can actually strike three from this because it's covered under C. For the director to report back on resources required to implement an automatic contribution program. So I don't know, is Ms. Joseph Dowers, can we strike item three from this, please? Are we updating it? Okay, no, I'm done talking. So I think, you know, it's, um. This sets some guidelines around the procedure that we would like to see back. It addresses the public concerns that we've seen over and over about transparency, accountability, and also putting some, some clear guidelines together on what we'd like to see back in the form of a procedure. It offers some choice for school councils, as well as, you know, their involvement, which is something that they expressed that they wish to have. So I do believe that this, these amendments address many of the concerns that we've heard from the public. And also, you know, and these concerns were expressed by the public who ultimately support an automatic contribution. And we're just looking for some clarity as well, so.
Sorry, I have a point of order, trustee Dawson. Go ahead, trustee Laskin.
C is explicit about resources required to implement. Is it not out of order? Because I thought any motion coming to board had to identify a funding source and be explicit. So now that it is in there as explicit, that it's going to require a funding source or some sort of funding, is C in order?
Trustee Laskin, the, the C is asking the director to report back on the resources required. It's not directing allocation of resources.
Yeah.
So for it to be in order, it needs to be neutral, does it not?
How isn't it neutral?
So any resources, the, the report back, the director report back on any resources required, the word any could be added. It is not a financial decision until the, the report comes back and says how much it'll be necessary. And then the decision would need to come from a, have a financial source identified. At this time, it is asking to see what the resources would be required, if any.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll speak if that's your decision. I'll speak to why I don't agree.
In collaboration with the director?
Sorry, trustee Dawson, just, it's on point of order still, so.
Okay.
I've, I've made a ruling and I've explained myself. Trustee Alaskin has the floor to explain and then maybe challenge the chair if you wish to.
I, I don't wish to challenge the chair, Mr. Chair, but I'm saying if we're already deciding on mandating, and then if we find out there's a funding source required, does that not defeat the principle that we have to identify a funding source before we vote?
I, yeah, I think I've made my point. If you want me to explain again, I think the, from the staff's request was for us to make a decision on one of the ways so that they can go back and look at and explore what it would require to do those things. As, that's what staff have generally been saying. Pick one of these things and tell us which way to go. And then once you tell us which way to go, we'll go work out all the details and bring back. And if there are things that, and that's what this is about, so it is based on that request that this is actually asking, so. Otherwise, this whole process would have been flawed right from the starting if, because we didn't have a financial resource identified even at the GPC when this motion was considered. So it would have been, if it was not out of order at that point of time, I don't think it's out of order now because it's again, the concept of trying to work out the details after giving some direction as to what to proceed with.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, to keep pushing this point, but the recommendation from GPC was for mandatory. It did not have all these subsections in it. The assumption was, even though staff talked about in GPC, that it would cost maybe money to implement it, the first vote should be mandatory or voluntary. And then if it's mandatory, then staff would need to go back and determine a funding source. And that, that's just my reading of the bylaws, but obviously you're the chair, so you decide.
Where do we go from now? Hey, if there's no challenge to the chair, the director, did you want to add it?
Sure, thank you. And through you, Chair. If, my understanding is that if this motion should pass, then this would need to be included in, in the current budget that we're planning. If passes in the 25, 26 school year, then a separate funding source would need to be identified. Thank you. And through you again, Chair, and I'll certainly ask associate director Zucker or executive officer Craig Snyder to add to this if necessary. However, my understanding is that if this motion should pass tonight with respect to item C, that would need to be included if additional resources are required in the planning of, of the upcoming budget. If it should pass after the budget passes during the 25, 26 school year, then a, a funding source would further need to be identified.
Thank you, Director. So we'll, we'll go ahead with the current wording unless there's a challenge to change the decision. Okay, go ahead, trustee Dawson.
Okay, perfect. I think I've said what I, what I need to say. I'm happy to take any questions from colleagues as they comment on this as well. But just to really drive the point home, I think that, you know, this well captures some of the concerns that we've heard from the public and ensures the public that we will, or assures the public that we will be addressing them in the procedure that, that will ultimately follow.
Thank you, trustee Dawson. Now trustees, now is a list, list, sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
In our policy development procedure, it says that if a policy must materially change from what it was consulted on in phase four, we must go back to, to phase three and reconsult in phase four. This is clear in our policy documentations. I know the board has made similar issue errors in the past. But on this one, in phase five, where what came out of phase four was a recommendation in a report by staff for a voluntary deduction from parent donations. This is a 180-degree U-turn. So should we continue with adopting the policy? Or should we abide by our policy development procedure and reconsult?
So I would like to ask the staff, when they presented these two options, did they think that if the mandatory or mandatory contribution was chosen, it'll be conflicting with our policy procedures related to policy development?
We'll, through you, Mr. Chair, if associate director Stacey Zucker can begin a response to that. And we may need to call another staff to add additional information.
Thank you.
Through the chair, we had consulted with the policy department and they didn't believe at this time that it would require additional consultation. But trustees can always direct additional consultation if required.
So just to be clear, associate director, the two options, regardless of whichever option the board chooses, it's still permissible within our policy development procedures, okay?
Through the chair, that's our understanding, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Lee, I, the point, point of order is not considered. Thank you. So trustee Lee and trustee Laskin is on the amendment list. And anybody who wishes to speak on this amendment or wishes to change anything to this amendment needs to get on the list for this time. So trustee Lee, trustee Laskin, trustee Liban Hassan, and trustee Michelle Adams. And trustee P. Okay. They, they were on the list for the questions for the moment, so you're on the list.
Okay, go ahead. All right. Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I do not agree to this amendment because no matter what you call a tax on parent donations, be it mandatory deduction or automatic deduction. Because no matter what you call a tax on parent donations, be it mandatory deduction or automatic deduction, it is a tax on parent donations, and a mandatory tax on parent donations is a bad idea. This proposal to impose a mandatory tax on parent donations is not just a policy error. It reflects a fundamental misunderstanding on what drives parent engagement, what builds community trust, and what the true responsibility of this board should be. Parent donations are acts of care, of commitment, and of deep belief in our schools. When a parent gives their hard earned money, they're telling us, I trust this school, I believe in the staff, and I want to be a part of its operations. This gift is personal, it is local, and it comes with purpose. And that purpose is often directed to specific programs or needs that the parent donor believes in. And yet this policy proposes that we respond to that generosity with taxation. And let's be honest about what this tax will do. You can frame it as a contribution to equity, but to parents, it will feel like a punishment for giving too much. And when people feel punished for giving, they stop showing up, they pull back, and they disengage. We cannot build equity by weakening the very engagement that strengthens our schools. We cannot build stronger communities by disincentivizing parents who are most involved. And real equity is not built by taking more from the willing, but built by bringing more people into the fold. We should not be penalizing those who are already contributing, instead we should be inspiring others to do the same. Policies designed to equalize outcomes through forced redistribution, even when well intentioned, often backfire. And sometimes, a bad idea is just a bad idea. Adam Smith in The Wealth of Nations wrote, "Public services are never better performed than when their reward comes in consequence of their being performed." And in other words, voluntary action driven by belief and commitment does more good than coerced compliance. Margaret Thatcher said, "The problem with socialism is that you eventually run out of other people's money." Perhaps worse, in our case, we run off, we run out of our parent community's willingness to give. We must not confuse control with equity. Equity isn't achieved by taking a cut from every act of kindness, it is achieved by creating conditions where more people feel inspired to give, not fewer. Parents have told us clearly and consistently through their advocacy that they are willing to contribute to equity voluntarily. They have said that they would gladly support other schools if a transparent, well managed, and voluntary program existed. But the TDSB has never designed or executed such a program effectively, effectively. So I ask, why would we choose to coerce generosity? When our families are already willing to give voluntarily? And make, make no mistake, this tax will cost us, if one in ten families stop donating because of this policy, we will lose an estimated one point five million dollars annually, that is not equity, that is self inflicted harm. A tax on giving will not close the gap, it will widen it. So I will end with this, just because a large group of people want to take something that belongs to someone else, it doesn't make it right to do so. And the majority vote and theft, supported by a majority vote, is still theft. And a bad idea, no matter how you dress it up, remains a bad idea. And colleagues, it is our role to bring equity to the board using provincially funded resources, not that of our parent community. We should be doing our jobs in using central funds to make sure that schools in need and students in need are well funded, and we have been doing that through central equity funds. I'm happy to support more, but I am not happy to support mandating a tax on parent donations. Team, let's build true equity by inspiring and not mandating.
Thank you, trustee Lee, trustee Laskin.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll speak quickly to the amendment and I'll make some statements, can we please vote at Seri Adam? For A, B, C, and D, please, um, because, um, for me, it's a principal vote with A. And whether it's an automatic contribution process, it's not really any better semantically than mandated. Um, and it's a principal vote for me, do you mandate a portion of fundraising dollars or not? And this debate is not new, without appropriate funding from the province to support learning and well being of students in our schools since amalgamation, we cannot meet community expectations, the same expectations that we used to have when we had taxing ability, we simply can't. And the fundamental issue is the underfunding of public education. When we can't give everything we need to give to our schools. Um, and I've always supported differentiated budgeting because we've always known that some schools can fundraise more than others, as my colleagues said, some parents have more time to volunteer, others can't. But we've known that, and that's why we differentiate budgets. And that's why trustee Dawson, when you heard responses from community members who said, what do you use your fundraising dollars for? They say computers, because they don't get class sets of computers like other schools get class sets of computers. That's the reality of differentiated budgets. In schools that have more fundraising dollars, they have less central resources. That's just school based budgeting, and that's a fact, and that's in our board website about how we provide funding to schools. So, and again, I've always supported the differentiated budgets because we act with intention then. Because the board understands that fundraising activities depend on a variety of factors, including socioeconomics. And again, that's why we support our schools differently, that is our board responsibility. It's not a parent caregiver community responsibility. Forcing contributions to a system priority fund, as we have found, is divisive. It's detracting right now from the bigger picture budget conversations that we should be having and will be having later in the agenda. They, parent community fundraising dollars should not be subsidizing the system. Fundraising has subsidized the system, we rely on fundraising dollars to subsidize the system, again, that's why we differentiate school budgets. And if we have to do more during budget conversations because of the inequities that have been raised over fundraising, then it belongs in FB, it belongs during budget conversations because, again, I repeat, it's a board responsibility. I explained in my quote in the Globe and Mail, that I just don't believe parent fundraising should be a board budget law. I really believe that mandating parent based school fundraising is not a way to equalize the system. And I believe it's the system responsibility, again, not a parent responsibility to do so. Um, in front of the vote, I appreciate all the efforts. The parents and caregivers support their students and they do it in very different ways, not all schools do it through fundraising. Many do it through fundraising and community events to build the relationships. At secondary schools, students usually do the fundraising themselves and usually have significant fundraising towards a charity of their choice. Even in schools in high socioeconomic areas, have a portion of fundraising that goes to the principal to make up for kids that can't go to the pizza lunches or can't go to the field trips. Because there are pockets of poverty almost in everywhere we look in the system. We have congregated sites, we should not be taking fundraising dollars from congregated sites. And again, for me, system equity is a board responsibility, and again, that is why we differentiate budgets and grants. I don't believe mandating fundraising will do anything except tokenize the idea that this is how we do equity. It is the last resort from my perspective, and I certainly don't support it, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Laskin, trustee Hassan.
Um, so I think we heard from, from both perspectives of the board. Um, this policy brought before us has been quite divisive, as many of us can, can see here. Um, with that said, we have some trustees arguing that this builds equity, and we have others arguing that this is tariffs, taxes, or even as James Lee said, theft, although I do disagree with that, I understand that trustees do look out for the benefit of their own communities. And I can see how this policy would benefit schools in Ward Six York Southwest. But with that said, I want to go into this with an unbiased, fair point of view to respect all trustees. Uh, so with that said, I believe trustees would benefit from a clearer understanding of the financial equity and operational implications of implementing a mandatory contribution model across all school communities. So I'd like to refer this back to staff and, and direct staff to provide a report analyzing the implications of a mandatory versus a voluntary contribution model for the systems priorities fund under the fundraising policy. I'd also like to ask staff that this report include estimated annual SPF revenue under both models, historical net fundraising data across schools by Ward and Equity Index, potential impacts on equity of access, and school council engagement. Uh, I think that in order for trustees to make a calculated decision, we need to have more data, more facts in front of us. I think there needs to be more engagement done amongst communities, I don't think there was enough of that done. So therefore, I, I like staff to refer this back and for staff to provide us the following reports. Instead of just uh, putting forward a report that says that it should be mandatory off the jump, so. Uh, I'd like trustees to support this motion, please, thank you.
Thank you, sorry, what is it? Is it point of order?
Point of order, just, uh, though I like the idea. Uh, referral was actually shot down at GPC, so uh, could we get clarification on whether we can actually even move referral from here?
I'm referring a new motion, this motion wasn't brought to GPC.
You're referring this motion?
Sorry.
Okay, okay.
Mended, right?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, um, referral motion, just want to, trustee McLean, just give us a half a minute. Um, Ms. Joseph Dawes, a referral motion still is in order, and it takes precedence, right? I just wanted to confirm that, that it's still in order. Um, but the, the argument or the, not the argument per se, but the clarification that's being sought is that there was a referral motion that was at GPC that was defeated, which would mean, uh, since that was defeated and the mandatory contribution motion, as it was worded then, uh, passed, would a referral motion take precedence? So we, we do not have that reflected in the, in the minutes here, so we want to, we want to, either, Rissus, can you speak to it, if you, as a chair of GPC?
Um, so when the policy came to GPC, um, it was moved for referral back to staff. And it lost on referral, and trustee Laskin moved a minority report.
Minority report was a non-referral, minority report was on the mandatory. But there was a referral motion that first did not pass, and then this passed. From the records, we do not have it reflected, so we will proceed with what we have here. Okay, we'll, we'll call a five minutes recess to, uh, talk to trustee Arts. Trustees, if you are ready, we can reconvene, we don't need the full five minutes. Yeah, every time new thing comes, you can speak again, so. Yeah, you, you will, you're on the list, but every time somebody moves a motion, you get a new list. If you are able to take a seat, we're going to continue on. Yeah. So trustees, there was a referral motion at GPC. Thanks trustee Arts, the chair of GPC, for pointing that out. Trustee Arts, please let us continue with the meeting. Trustee Arts, thank you very much for pointing that there was a referral motion that was defeated. The referral motion was to perform an analysis of the fundraising activities. And plus, this referral motion as a board is considered to be a new motion for the amendments that are being made in light of the changes that are being made. So I am going to rule that the motion by trustee Hassan seconded, is it seconded by trustee Patel, is in order. So the referral motion takes precedence. So that will be discussed first. And at this point, I would like to ask, there's one thing that is being changed where it says implication of different contribution models. Yeah. No, they didn't, they didn't correct it properly. Okay, so different contribution models with an S on there. So trustees, this is the second amendment to the motion. And as I understand, from our processes, two amendments per motion is what would be considered maximum, right? So this is the, this is the referral motion. So if, if trustees would like to speak on this, this is a new list. So anybody wish to speak, trustee Pay, did you want to get on the list for this?
One sec. Can I go as a second?
Okay, so I'm going to get trustee Patel to speak as the seconder and then we will move on to trustee Pay and then trustee Laskin.
Thank you, Chair Shan, and thank you trustee Hassan for bringing this forward. Then I'm happy to second this motion and there are reasons behind that. And as a trustees, we always look for best advice from staff. And same thing I said on other day when the referral motion came in, that as a trustees, we are looking for best advice. And then there are new trustees in the room and, you know, even for me, I mean, I still don't know the difference between voluntary and mandatory because mandatory, we do not have any parameters. Where is this funding going? Who's going to manage the funds? How can a parent council apply? Same as voluntary, I mean, as a trustee, I like to get the best advice from staff with both of the options. And then we trustees decide which one we should pick. And this is the very reason why I'm supporting this motion and I urge you all my trustee friends to please support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Pay?
Mr. Chair, I want to bypass for, I want to speak for another amendment, not for this one.
Okay. So if this get referred, there won't be, there won't be any other, so just.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Speak on the referral though.
Sure. I have a few question that raised by my community members. So I want to ask staff, you know, the number one, do we have an existing system already addressing equity concerns at our board?
So through the chair, I will start with the financial part of, if you're referring to school budgets in particular, I think we have multiple ways that we address equity in, in the amount of funding that we provide to schools. When it comes to fundraising, we also do have a system equity fund and we know that that schools do raise money for other schools. But if you're asking about equity and the initiatives that we have in particular, then I would turn it to associate director Salmon.
Thank you for the question. I think we would need clarity on what specific area of equity you're talking about. It's a pretty broad range. Thank you.
Okay, I want just to narrow down my question is, I do think we have existing system that already addressing equity concern. It basically has structured, you know, budget allocation model based on LOI index. Am I correct? Do we allocate our funding to schools based on LOI index?
Through the chair, we provide funding to schools. There is an amount for model schools that we do provide as a supplemental school budget. But the, I'm not sure of the amount. It's not a significant amount, but yes, we do provide that. And I would turn to executive officer Snyder if there is anything else that we provide to schools with regards to equity.
The Center for Students for Black Excellence, we do have some staffing models that rely on LOI as a base to start. Our equal allocation of staff will be the top that come to mind at this time.
Okay, so my colleagues, we have a model that addressing equity concerns, which considers various factors, including student enrollment, school size, socioeconomic indicators, to ensure that resources are distributed in the way that address the diverse need of a student population. So we should make effort, focus on getting the budget right instead of mandating fundraising tariff that will shave the burden of equity on parents and the school councils. So through you, Mr. Chair, I have a second question for staff. Is volunteer voluntary contribution already happening at the TDSB?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, we are aware that there is schools that voluntarily provide funds to other schools. We just don't have a way of tracking at this point in time, but we are aware that there are occasions when one school provides support to another school through a voluntary donation of the funds they've raised.
Thank you. So my colleagues, I want to ask you a second question. If volunteer contributions are already happening, should it be encouraged, not forced? We hear from the parents' community, either by delegations or emails, several schools, including those in both higher and the lower-income neighborhoods, are ready to support others voluntarily. This organic, community-driven generosity should be nurtured and celebrated, making this mandatory risk breeding resentment and disengagement with the several school councils likely to stop this report and if they are tariffed as well. I think the parents' voice should be heard. We should center their interest. This mandatory policy will desynthesize parents' engagement and undermine community efforts. School fundraising is community-driven effort fueled by the time, energy, and goodwill of parents volunteers. Mandating that a portion of those funds be redirected away from their local school disrespect that effort and discourage participation. It sends the wrong message that volunteer work and community generosity are subject to bureaucratic redistribution. Residents being respected and trusted to serve the students they were intended to support. It will decrease total fundraising across the board. Many parents are already contribute with understanding that their donations go directly to enhancing their local school's educational experience, be it through field trips, guest speakers, arts program, or as curriculars. The intent introduction of a tariff will almost certainly reduce motivation to fundraise or donate at all, resulting in lower overall revenue across the TDSB. I for one, will serious reconsider my role as trustee because I'm here to representing the voices, to representing their interest, to center our interest on the student achievement. Finally, this motion will add more bureaucracy and cost to undermine that goal. Implementing and enforcing this policy would require having additional TDS staff to audit and manage compliance. This is highly inefficient and will cause more than it will produce. Moreover, mandating one, two, three percent contribution, said concerning precedent, what begins as modest percentage can easily increase over time. Once this mechanism in place, there's little to prevent that percentage from growing year over year, further eroding the ability of school community to meet their own need. We do not want to open the door.
Good trustee Pay.
To an escalating levy on fundraising effort that will never mean that to address system-wide equity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Laskin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Specifically, first of all, I don't support referral. I don't want staff to do this work if in fact A doesn't even pass. Or if A passes, then this work is fine. They're going to have to do this work anyway. But I don't want to refer something back to staff before this board has voted on the principal decision, whether or not we're mandating a portion of fundraising or we're leaving it voluntary. I just think that makes sense. The board needs to make that principal decision first. Secondly, many of the things in B aren't possible for staff to come back with. There is no other school board. There's no research. It's pure speculation in terms of potential impacts or estimated revenue under both models, like you, staff can't do that. There's no basis for them to do that. And they said that at GPC.
Sorry, trustee Hassan, trustee Laskin is speaking. We can, we can, trustees can use their time to ask the staff questions. So hopefully some trustees will ask those questions, but go ahead, trustee Laskin.
So, so, okay, I'll stop going into the detail there. In general, I don't support referral until this board decides whether or not we're going forward with the recommendation from GPC, which was for mandated. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Laskin. Trustee McLean?
Thank you, and through the chair. I'm going to support referral today because the motion as it presented is too vague to me and too open. The concept that we would approve a mandated concept and then staff was going to get back and tell us whether it was one, two, or three percent, it's just a flawed concept to me. The pushback at one percent was dramatic. So I think we should at least understand what it is we're doing. While they're looking at it, I, I don't, it's just, I don't know whether this is just going to be, the analysis that staff is going to be doing is simply just trying to calculate what one percent would be versus two percent versus three percent because that's pretty straightforward. We can do that. I don't know if you're being asked to consider thresholds, like up to one point, you do one percent, then, you know, a different, then you get to two above, then you get to three. Like, I don't know, I don't even know what you're being asked, to be honest. I don't know what this this represents. We live in a society now where woke and DEI are terms that people use as weapons. I work in the Toronto District School Board and these are necessities in our world. We have students in our board and it's our responsibility to, to deal with all these issues. And the motivation for this motion and this concept is real. The inequity is, is tangible throughout our board. As was shared by trustee Laskin and trustee Lee, I too think that in a perfect world, we would have funding, that the work I came to do, quite honest, is to deal with how would the board move its assets and to the best use to help students in need. Those are the conversations that motivated me to seek the office. But we don't get to do that because the funding isn't, the funding isn't substantial. We don't get to do that. I've been here six-plus years and we don't spend any time doing that. So this is real. The need to do this is, is, is real. We have inequity everywhere. I brought this, I had a school council ward forum a couple, a year and a half ago when this was on the verge, this was coming. And an hour in, I threw this out on the table to see what people just thought. And the visceral reaction by those opposed was, took me back and shocked me, quite honest, because as was the example that was shared, I used to chair, I was the chair of the school council for nine years. We did fundraising, we had big fall fairs. And if you told me we made 10K at the fall fair, that was great. And if I went into the accounting office and you told me I made, you know, we made $9,900, that was still great. The concept that the one percent is, is just, but the difference it makes to parents in this system and the perception that this is a tax and a tariff and the concept that it will, has the potential to shrink the pie, right? People are going to be less likely, people have told us that they will be less likely to engage in these activities if you start clawing them back. So I think before we do that, we need to do a couple of things. We need to thoroughly understand what it is we'd be doing. And I think we ought to take a modified run at the volunteer, how we do voluntary better. I think there's a possibility to voluntary better. But we should at least understand the choices that we're making. And so I'm in favor of referral because I need more information. But I will ask a couple of questions because I've got some time. Do schools who have, what do they call them? Sorry. Home and school associations, are they, does that operate differently than school council fundraising?
Thank you for that question, trustee McLean. I'll ask Craig to respond.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Home and school associations are independent entities that are registered with CRA and conduct their business and raise their money after they're reporting to, for, to the CRA. And then they would give funds or equipment in kind to the school that they're supporting. But they are independent of the board and not report as part of our financials.
So is it not a risk then that in our system, we're going to have councils that are going to determine they don't like the tax and that they're going to set up a, something that we allow currently, that they're not going to be reinventing the wheel, they're just going to be checking, checking box B and suggesting, we check box B, we change the title of how we do this and now we're not subject to the tax. So if we're going to explore what all this means. So if we're going to explore what all this means, I'd like us to think about that. I'm not sure what you do with that, but I do think it's a challenge that, that's out there.
Thank you, trustee McLean. On the referral motion, I have trustee Lee, trustee Earhart, trustee Klein, trustee Dawson, and trustee Arts. Okay, trustee Lee.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I'd like to thank trustees Hassan and Patel for moving this referral motion. I think the questions are great. It pains me every time when we make a decision without necessary data or relevant information. It just feels like making a decision, being, while being misinformed, is not the responsible thing to do. I unfortunately cannot support the referral motion as much as I appreciate it, because the question being asked tonight is one of principle. The principle is, should the TDSB be asking parents to use their funds to create equity in schools? And the, the question is, do or does this board have the mandate to redirect only, not only funds from the province, but also funds contributed by parents? And the third question is, do we feel like we have done enough through a voluntary contribution programs across school councils and have failed so badly that we now need to mandate? And the answer to all three of those questions, as directed to me by very engaged parents within the school councils in my community, is absolutely not. I appreciate the analysis, I want to learn more, but on these three questions of principle, which is what is being asked tonight, the answer is no. I will happily work with anyone on this board, and I wish trustee Hassan and Patel is one of you, because I think your questions are great, to set up a voluntary contribution program with a minimum funds guaranteed by the central school board. Which means, we'll ask the parents to contribute, and if we don't get to our target, the central board will make up for the minimal. I'd be happy to move that, to make sure that our students and communities are given the resources that they deserve. But that is not the question being asked tonight. The three principal questions I mentioned before are, the answer is no to all of this. This is why I do not believe referral at this moment is the right thing to do. But I'd be happily, I'd be honored to work with any one of you on a voluntary program with a minimum guarantee by the central board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee Lee, trustee Earhart.
Ask if the referral passes, does the fundraising policy as a whole pass this evening? Or does the entire fundraising policy also get referred and deferred? Thank you.
Yeah, there was no separate part to this, this, the main, main motion that came out of was related to this, so the entire, entire policy would be referred.
Just if I'm to understand, it's the entire policy that's being referred back to staff? Okay, thank you. I, I know that this policy has not been updated, and that we are waiting for an updated policy, and that to get reports back that were discussed in GPC, that had been requested, because I sat on GPC for two years, that had been requested, questions had been asked related to this at every phase of the policy to which I, I was a part for those two years. I, I don't personally think we should delay the policy any further. Thank you.
Structurally, we could have the rest of it separate from the policy, and we just tied everything up, unfortunately, so we'll have to come back to that. Trustee Klein, and then trustee Dawson and trustee Arts. Trustee Klein.
Thank you, and through the chair. So, so we say we don't know what the parameters are, and we don't know the details, is it one percent, is it two percent? But I think that that was all secondary to what we should be discussing. This is about the principle of whether it should be mandatory or voluntary. Staff will determine the framework. So I can't support referral, because we haven't answered that very question, should it be mandatory or voluntary? Should parents bridge funding gaps? Absolutely not. We cannot, and we should not rely on dedicated parent volunteers to bridge budgetary gaps. It's, it's an approach that isn't appropriate, it's not sustainable. We also have no reliable data that tells us that this is even a good idea. But instead, we have to, we have to look to identify solutions, look at centralized funds that prioritize and maximize resources for the areas that we need it most. We should be seeing this as an opportunity to work with our parents, who are our donors, to share their contributions voluntarily, and engage them on the decision-making as to how their money, their money is spent. And they're asking for guidance. I hear it, I, I hear it in my emails and my texts, and people stopping me, they want to know how. We may say, well, you kind of know how to share with schools, but many of the parent councils are saying, we don't actually know the mechanisms for how we could give intentionally. What I mean by intentionally, parents are saying, we like to know that our parent is going to X fund, a nutrition fund, a book fund, a field trip fund, a speaker fund, whatever it, it might be. I believe it is important that we support our schools that do have fewer fundraising opportunities, but the responsibility must not be placed on parent contributions. We already have differentiated budget, and I support that wholeheartedly. But it's not up to parents to make up for funding shortfalls. Parents do step up to the plate, and they want our guidance to show how they can do more. And again, it comes down to a principal decision. Should we be, should it be mandatory, should it be voluntary? Not how is it implemented, and how much is it going to be, and what is it going to look like? But should we be asking parents to make up for the fact that we are underfunded? That is it. That is, that is really all that is significant. And how can you look a parent in the eye and say, well, you know, we're underfunded? But perhaps now, if we just take your money and say, no, that's not their responsibility. We cannot put them, it's like we have our, our guns trained on, on the wrong people. I think it's a, it's a heck of a lot of chutzpah to ask donors, no, excuse me, to tell donors, it's a lot of chutzpah to tell donors what they should be doing with our money. This is an opportunity for the TDSB to work with our donors as partners. Donors give voluntarily, they are our partners. This is opportunity. So I can't support referral. But I do have one question for staff. What is the timing, and when would staff come back to us with this? Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair. If the policy was approved tonight, it would take us a couple of months to bring the procedure forward, to fully vet it out, and make sure that we covered all the issues that we've heard from both the board and the community.
So trustee Klein, do you still have more questions or more comments?
Yep. Sorry, I just want to say that I think that that means that the referral would also take a, a little while to provide all of the information that's being asked for. It is unlikely unless we were able to get it to the June GPC meeting.
Thank you. Trustee Klein, you.
Well, I just, concerns are that it would be, through the chair, excuse me, that, that, this will be rushed to be implemented for September, and this doesn't give schools time.
Thank you. Are you, are you finished with your comments, and then move on to the next speaker? It's good? Okay, thank you.
I have trustee Dawson and trustee Arts. Trustee Hassan, if the question is about speaking at the end, it's, since it's a, since it's a referral, it's a, it's not the original motion, you don't get to speak twice, so I'll just get Alex, trustee Dawson, and then trustee Arts here.
I, I can go ahead. Okay, thank you through your chair. I don't support referral back. I do agree that we need to make a principal decision tonight, whether it be mandatory or voluntary, but I do have a couple of questions. So with respect to the subsections of B, my question to staff is, are those things doable? Can you do those things?
Through you, Mr. Chair. The, both the estimates in I and the potential impact in IIII would be estimates, the board will have to give you range of say like at five percent, 10 percent, 15 percent. We would use historical fundraising we have seen from the schools in the past. And again, the same limitations we outlined in the report about the data that we provide to you about fundraising would be the same limitations on the reliability of the data with our current system and the way schools input information. But based on those historical numbers, we would provide you estimates at different levels, because we don't, we would not be able to assess the impact, especially of IIII, as there's no historical data that would tell us. It would just be, here's possible ranges of what could happen.
Okay, thank you. Then my next question is about the home and school associations. Are schools not required to report all sources of school-generated funds, whether, whether they be donations in kind through a home and school association, monetary donations? Why are those not always being recorded as part of school-generated funds, which is what I understand from before? So I'm asking for clarification.
Through you, Mr. Chair. The home and school associations are independent organizations and are not under the influence of the Education Act, and therefore, unlike school councils or school-generated funds, they only have to report to taxation, and we only hear about what they have when they either donate money to the school, or they donate kind and say, here's basketballs for the gym or something. But we have no way and no levers to ask them what their fund, how much they fundraise, and what, how much it costs to fundraise, or what they did with those funds until they deliver something to us.
Okay, so they, we, they are, we are required to report all sources of funds or in-kind donations from home and school associations? Is that correct?
We would report the, the fund dollars, if there was dollars, as part of the school fundraising, the saying that we got a donation for X number of dollars, as we rule with any other donation we get. But up to that point, we don't, they are not included in our financial information. We don't know how much funds they have, or what they've collected, or for what purpose, because they don't work through the school, and they are a separate legal entity.
Okay. I'm going to try and ask this again. Do we report, receive reports from schools on all sources of funds and donations in kind that are received by those schools?
We have information from my financials perspective of funds they receive in kind, we do not report. So if they got basketballs from a donation or something like that, we would not report that in our financials.
So if they received 3,000 Chromebooks, would they, would we report that?
Though, that would not be reported, because that'd be in kind. So it would not, yeah.
All right, thank you for answering my question. I had no more questions.
Thank you, trustee Dawson. The last trustee on the referral motion is trustee Arts.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So I actually, I was kind of in favor in, in favor of referring the previous motion to staff for consideration, but this whole new list of stuff, I, I don't actually see the point to this. And I'll take one, I'll take a couple of steps back. My frustration here is essentially what was expressed to me by my community, most vocally by my model schools. This is a mess. We are substituting motions and wordsmithing on the floor in the boardroom during a board meeting. We should have approved the policy, which has been under review for my entire time as a trustee and longer. We should have approved the policy and then gone away and done this, the rest of this, in a thoughtful manner that reflected good governance. Even, even the suggestion to mandate something new without understanding how it might work was a bad governance decision. And it's not a direct insult to any particular person, this is just not the way we should be doing our work as trustees. So I get the central, a central equity fund, my councils, when I met with them on Monday, and all my model schools came and they shared with me how they partner together, and how this will negatively impact them, this mandate will negatively impact how my model schools are partnering together to raise funds, because the only way, we can't set a surplus, we can't just supply this to some school councils and not others, we have to do this to everybody. So it's going to impact everybody. They were angry. What I heard back from, from the, as a group, as we discussed, as they shared how they're actually partnering, was excitement amongst my school councils, all of them, for new ways to work together. What they asked of me is that we, as a board, I find a way to help the board go away, design this, bring it back to them, and ask them to join us, to do it in a manner that asks them to join us, not a motherhood statement, that we don't even know how it's going to implement. So I'm at a point, I can't support the original mandate, I can't support this, I can't support what was this substituted, because this is not well thought out, it is not planned, I don't know what the impacts are going to be, I don't know what the budget implications are going to be. But I do know that we have already caused mistrust in our system, and we risk causing greater harm. And this is not to the affluent communities, this is what I'm hearing, this is what my councils from my model schools told me that they see as a risk, and where they were disappointed in the lack of us working in a clear manner that made sense to them. So I have no idea how I'm going to vote, I can't tell you, because none of this makes any sense to me. We should have been, approved the policy, because it just needs to be approved, the policy is fine. And then gone away and worked thoughtfully with staff on how to implement something that could increase our engagement. Because the majority of my school councils, regardless of how much money they raise, even if they don't raise very much, are doing external charitable donations, either to other schools or other charities. They want to do this, they want to engage with this, they want to work with us. They do not want to be told that we don't trust them enough. It was much we're saying, we're going to mandate this because we don't trust you to contribute to equity and believe in equity with us. And they do. When we met, they've sent me letters, and when we met in person, or sorry, virtually in a meeting to ask questions, they want to do this. They want, they want us to build the structure to help them participate and do this. But nobody wants to be told what to do.
Thank you, trustee Arts. Seeing no other speakers on the referral motion, we will get to vote on this. It's not up yet, please hold on. So this is on the motion by trustee Hassan, seconded by trustee Patel on the referral, with the report back with those details.
Srikantharaja against.
Sorry, trustee Laskin asked for Sri Adam for the other one, I think, not this one. Not this one.
Welkharat Ben against. Dawson against.
One second, folks, there was, so this one is not Sri Adam, it's altogether. Reporting back on. So please go ahead. Vote on eScribe or call out your votes. Shan against. Trusty Arts.
Yeah, still waiting.
Right, yeah. For the other one, you could still ask. And she had a in favor. Trustee Sriskandaraja.
Against.
Said against. Trustee D W S. Yeah, he can. Right, that's defeated. So we now move on to the speakers list I had on the amendments that was proposed by trustee Dawson, seconded by trustee King. And I have trustee Arts, trustee P, trustee Rajak Lasinga and trustee McLean on that list. Trusty Arts.
So I'm just going to say what I just said. Plus, I don't understand what the rush is. I don't understand why this also has to be done because I didn't get to include that. I think, honestly, uh, what I would like to see is that we approve the policy and then this that's in this motion here is a motion to staff to go away and do, help us, sorry. I don't want to lay things on staff and more work on staff. But we go away as a board and do this work and do this thoughtfully.
Thank you, trustee Arts. There was a request by trustee Dawson earlier for recorded word on this as well as officially. So we'll have a record word and I also had a request to have it, it's Siri Adam, right? For this one. Um, trustee P. You wish to speak on this?
Now, your chair can speak for the main motion.
Okay.
After this.
Yep. If you wish to, that's fine. And then trustee Rajak Lasinga.
Thank you through the chair. Uh, last year, when this motion first came forward or this proposal for the idea of a mandatory versus voluntary contribution came forward, I was really proud that the board was considering mandatory. My concerns were how do we uphold transparency and accountability? Um, and at the time, the board directed that contributions in this priority fund be part of the annual report on school generated fu- funds and confirmed that it aligned with the ministry guidelines of fundraising. As if, for if it had a designated purpose and use of proceeds were transparently outlined in the report. To me, it's pretty straightforward that once we vote tonight on the proposal of mandatory or automatic, I'm confident that staff will do the work on how this policy will outline and how the funds will be used in a transparent and accountable way. On every school visit I go to, I always ask principals, how is parent council doing? And while my principals individually have an amazing relationship with families, when it comes to school council engagement, it is fairly low in my community. Alongside the time and capacity, the lack of time and capacity, the families in my ward and other wards face. In my ward, there's an added layer of a large language barrier that many families in my community faced. Uh, and including students living with grandparents with their parents back home. Um, so as their primary caregivers, grandparents don't have the time or energy or the language to communicate and attend, uh, parent council. Looking at the annual revenue by school, um, looking at the, uh, the report on annual revenue by school and school generated funds. A number of my schools are only able to raise under twenty thousand in school generated funds with a handful raising only five thousand. So if we look at this proposal by trustees Dawson and King, who I'm, I think is a great proposal, three percent of some of these schools that are raising six hundred thousand, four hundred thousand, three hundred thousand is still more than what some of my schools can fundraise in school generated funds. And as trustees of the boards, we go beyond our wards, but we are trustees of this board. All of us should be infuriated that this is the state of our communities. And, and I agree, in an ideal system, we wouldn't have a structural deficit. We would, we wouldn't have to advocate for the province to fund necessary grants. But in this term and the last year and year out, we have advocated about how underfunded we are as a system. Including tonight, looking at the urgently addressing growing inflationary gap in per pupil education funding and a business arising, we share a hundred and twelve million in underfunding by the province. So right now, many school fa- communities are facing immediate urgent needs. We don't have the time to wait on the province. And I'll give you another example. Last year, we received a report on student nutrition and in my community, we had the second highest need in student nutrition, meaning my school, my community was one of the highest number of students attending school hungry. This report went on to share that there was a list of schools that are taking part in a food nutrition program. So in my community that has the highest, one of the highest needs for student nutrition programs, only eight schools are taking part in a food nutrition program because these programs rely on volunteers of school community. So this shows that when the school community cannot support their own nutrition programs through volunteers, that should highlight my community's capacity as well to raise, uh, school related, school generated funds. As well as how, uh, high the need for urgent needs are. We often talk about fairs in, ever since I became a trustee, I've never attended a fun fair in my ward because we don't have fun fairs in my ward. We talk about equitable access to resources and opportunity. Equity only works if the resources are there to match it. If not, it's just performative words that fall on deaf ears. Uh, in the past few weeks, especially in this boardroom, I've heard, uh, the, the system fund referred to as charity. It's not charity. It is an investment into communities that are facing the highest and most urgent needs. And I think it's, to me, it's a simple ask. It's very straightforward. And it's really concerning to me that it's taking this much time and this much resistance to something that puts equity work into action and it's not just words. So I want to thank trustees Dawson and King for, for putting this work forward. I know there's been a lot of disagreement, but I hope this puts us on the path um, to, to create some type of framework. Thank you.
Thank you very much. On this amendment, we have trustee McLean and trustee Klein.
And through the chair. Fundraising at the school level is designed to be this, where quite often you have this noble thing in mind, you're going to raise money. But it's also the, the process of it is a very uplifting thing for school communities. They come together, they donate their time, they have something noble, a target, whether, um, they're allocated, they're going to give some of it away. Whether they're going to try to raise money for the playground, support the meal programs, whatever they're doing in their program. They all feel proud about getting together and their collaborative efforts to do the noble thing that they set out to do. Um, I'm really concerned that the mandatory component of this will tarnish that. We've heard that from people that have come to delegated before the board. We've read that in the emails that have been sent to us. Now, whether that comes to fruition or not, well, we will only know. I can't support this because of the one, two, I don't even know what it, we're talking about. So I, I can't in essence, write a blank check and find out later what it's going to be. So I can't do that. But offering school councils some choices to which campaigns and school councils they may contribute to. In the, in the event that this happens and this passes, I would like to see us consider an additional systems priority fund that just goes into a pot and then is equally divided at the end of the year for those who choose to contribute to that pot as opposed to the current uh, systems priority funds. And it would be really simple and really transparent. Schools would put their portion, whether it be voluntary or whatever model, you would put your money into the pot. At the end of the year, you would divide the pot equally by a hundred and fifty, the number of LOI schools that we support. And then you give the money, you reroute it to the schools that we're looking to support. And then it would appear to be exactly what we're trying to do. They would be able to spend that money as though they had raised it themselves. And they would get to choose how they allocated the use of the funds. Currently, in our systems priority funds, we have out, we have very specific targets, what we do with that money. And we don't send it out proactively. We have to have people connect saying they have a need and then access the money in the funds. It would be incredibly transparent to have this fund. We would report as a school board that we collected X. Each of school in the one fifty got Y. And they, schools would know what they were getting. Their first meeting in the fall, their portion of this fund would be defined. And they could say, we want scientists in the school. We want to bring one in or we want to supple- supplement the, the nutrition program. But they would choose what was best for them. Instead of a central system that allocate, that supports clothing or supports backpacks, or that may not be the need in their schools. So whichever way we go about doing this, and I, and I prefer a voluntary system and I think we should double down on, uh, in September and highlight the need and point people in this direction. And before we create a tax, I think we have responsibility to explore the voluntary model with, with more vim and vigor and have refined it. But either way, I think if we created a, a systems priority fund that was really clear what it did, was really transparent in what it did, then people would know exactly where the money was going. They'd get to follow it. And I think that would help with some of the confidence that people had some apprehension about this. Well, where is it going to go? How do we know what it's going to do? Uh, so I'm not sure how this is going to go, but either way, I think that a new, uh, systems priority fund would be beneficial.
Thank you. Trustee Klein.
Thank you through the chair. So we refer tonight that we can't wait for the province to fund us adequately. And so therefore, we have to mandate donations and I just think that that is an extremely dangerous precedent. Because we're shouldering parents with the responsibility to fund our schools to fill these budget shortfalls. We should never say that we can't wait for the province to do its job. We need to continue to press for adequate funding and not just say, well, if they're not going to do it, we're gonna, we're gonna, uh, train the guns on the parents because that's exactly what it appears to the parents and it is exactly what we're doing. We are making the parents make up for what the province should be doing and quite frankly, what our own board, that we know that we're responsible to be doing to ensure that our, our schools are adequately funded and to ensure that differentiated budgets are working properly. This isn't a case of, 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 of like whether we are, or we can wait or not. It is merely a case of we are now going to force our parents to do it. And I just cannot support that in any way. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to pass the chair to vice chair Patel. Thank you. Um, we've heard quite a bit of conversation about we are forcing parents to fundraise for what the province should be doing. In fact, even if you look at school-based fundraising, that's what's happening. We are asking, if, if a school council is fundraising for things in their own school, we are already asking indirectly for our community to contribute to their schools for what should be funded by the province. Now, we, if we expand their school community to the board, it's the same thing. Imagine if we had a system where grade nine parents said they are going to fundraise only for grade nine. If grade twelve parents said we can only fundraise for grade twelve. It is building that family and saying TDSP is one system. We are fundraising for your school and then there is this bigger community that we as a system is impacted. And that is appealing to people to say, you know, let's build in our work where a very small percentage is automatic. But I'm hoping with this culture and with this encouragement of volunteer, the, the school councils that raise a lot more money will surpass that automated deduction. If you feel that it could be sold in a way that we as a, as a community are taking care of each other. If my school raised hundred thousand dollars, it's a thousand or two thousand dollars out of that in a way that goes to support some, some other schools. I'm sure many schools will be okay with it over time. If we sell it, if we pitch it as a way for us to build this community as a Toronto community, as a board. And we expand who we consider as our school community widely. And that is the critical part here. Do we feel that connection? Now, some schools may say, we want to donate to this particular school and we don't want to feed into this act of charity for what should be equity. I don't want my son to think that the neighborhood school that is poor, that they are fundraising to support those kids as opposed to trusting us as a system to do that work. If they don't trust us, it's a problem of us that having to fix that trust. If communities feel that if they give the money to the Toronto District School Board System Fund, then we may not do as good of a job as they would. Then we have to build that trust by doing the things and showing what it's being used for. Because as a system, we know where the needs are much better than a school council that is in a particular neighborhood. So it's important for us to build that trust to say, you know, you give us this thousand dollars. Here is how, how other things do, how United Way does, how other people do. This system priorities fund is going to these places. Build that trust, show the community that the money that they're giving, then they won't choose to give the hundred dollars to that neighborhood school that they think. They think giving it to the central fund would be better understood and, and matched. Maybe we might find other matching donation because this is there. So as a system, we build better capacity. Now, this is only a small solution to the bigger problem. We should advocate for the province to fund what is essential. Technology is an essential part of curriculum, not, uh, good to have. Musical equipment as part of all-rounded education should be outdoor education. We cannot have schools deciding going to the mall across the street is their field trip. We have a problem of chronic underfunding. While we advocate for it, here is a way for the community to show that they are putting in the effort. Now, over time, this might not be necessary because we are building this culture of an equity-based fundraising. It happens in many places. Many workplaces have it. Many, even many communities have it. Uh, it is important for us to build this into, into, into a structure that works. And to understand that this equity work is a commitment. It's not a voluntary thing. We've, we have written it everywhere. And here is a way, because if it's a commitment, it has to be policy. It has to be in a way that our principles align with it. And I do think that I would have preferred if there was a way, I understand there's no way. If there's a way to have it over a certain amount of threshold to have a percentage, you know, which, which didn't have a mechanism for, say, if we have raised over twenty thousand dollars that comes in, as you know, as you know, there's schools that may need it more. But I do think that it is very critical that we move forward in a direction where we show this is necessary. And we actually ask all those who are concerned to come together to make sure the province then actually addresses these gaps. The final comment I'll, I'll make because this has been said over and over at time, many times. People who are raising three thousand dollars a year are also working hard. Sometimes they are working harder. You might have thirty people working throughout the year to raise five thousand. There might be parents signing a check for ten thousand in few seconds. So it's not just about hard work and we hope we can respect the hard work of those people who are working hard to raise even a few thousands. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Shan. I'll pass back the chair.
Sorry, we need a motion to extend, uh, like, let's say extend to half an hour. Trustee Laskin, trustee King, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Let's carry. Thank you. Trusty Harhart.
Thank you, Chair, and, uh, thank you to the movers. I, uh, appreciate, uh, the, some of the clarity. I appreciate uh the, some of the clarity that's offered um here to give a shape to procedure, which, which I understand uh is, is the next step after policy is details and procedure. And so uh it's, to me, it's helpful to see that. Being simple for schools and school councils to implement is really important to me um and, and the community I represent and, and, and what I understand to be one of the motivators for those um that have come to me supporting uh what's being called the mandatory contribution because it is built in. And for them, a simple process of a modest amount is desirable as it is easy for them to implement as volunteers. And still allows them to continue with the other volunteer and charitable activities that they undertake. And so this is something that I hope will be simple. Uh I also just wanted to mention uh that, that some timing has been offered and for what it's worth, in my view, I'm not clear why we would need a fall twenty twenty-five implementation. There is nothing we do in partnership uh with school council communities and broader school communities that doesn't take time. Uh and so I would hope that the time that is needed for a simple uh process uh as well as a fund that is simple, uh the time that it's needed to come back. Uh we will request timing, like how is it going, when will we get it, as we do with everything else. Uh and as with other things, if more time is needed, we, we, we may, we may grumble as a board, but we will give it if we're not getting back the information that's needed for good governance. Uh and just thank you very much um to the movers.
Thank you, trustee Harhat. I don't see anybody else on the list for this. So we will move on to the vote and we are voting uh at Suri Adam for the four parts. So we will start with A on this. And, and all, all the votes are recorded votes on this.
Wilka Rotman against.
Srikanth Rajan in favor.
Shan in favor.
Trustee Patel against.
Trustee Hassan against.
Just your right of listening in favor. Yeah. Missing anyone? So it's uh defeated ten to twelve. Part B. So trustee Laskin, what's the question? Okay, middle up. Sorry?
Cause it's not automatically voluntary, right? We still have to vote that in the policy.
We will have to vote that, but right now.
So one isn't, one isn't applicable, but are the, are the rest?
No, no, we, we are still on the amendments. If this doesn't, amendments don't pass, we go back to the GPC. We don't have to go back to the GPC recommendation because the first one is very similar to the GPC. Yeah.
I, I'm sorry, point, point of order, I, I don't understand how the one, two, threes and B are relevant when we've just defeated mandatory.
Yeah, so we don't, we don't have the rest of the rest of the.
I mean, I, I get whatever we decide should be simple for schools and councils to implement and utilizing current staff resources.
Yeah, so.
Offering examples, offering councils, how they can contribute, I think all of those are fine, it's just the one.
I don't think all of them needs to, because they were on the premises of the first one. Trustee Dawson and trustee King is that, am I right in assuming that once the first one doesn't pass, the rest of it are are things that there's no reason to go on to it, yes?
Then Mr. Chair, I'd like to move the minority report from committee which makes it voluntary and include two, three, four and five. So it advertises to school councils the kinds of funds they could contribute to.
Go ahead, trustee.
We just voted on the amendment. The amendment failed. So, or do we not have to refer back to the motion that came out of committee?
Yes, but.
Before we get to the.
Definitely, the, the only difference here, trustee McLean, is the first clause and our original motion were identical. Except the wording.
I moved the minority report on voluntary.
Uh trustee Dawson's amendment had incorporated the, the mandatory.
Never seen that before, but okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm into new tricks. I'm into.
Trustee, um trustees, the amendment failed. The original motion, the amendment that was proposed included the original mandatory contribution as well. So since the amendment failed, we won't need to vote on that again. It's the same, it's the same motion. So now, since we don't need to vote on that, um since that failed, trustee Laskin, who moved a minority report, is moving her minority report for the other option right now. And trustee. What's the other part to it, trustee Laskin?
And simply move that a voluntary contribution be included in the revised fundraising policy. And then one of my other colleagues can move something about communication and making it simple for schools to know how to voluntarily contribute.
Sorry, so can I have a second for that? Trustee Nanziera, okay. I have, um, let's go with questions for um people on this. Make a new list now. Trustee Pay. Yeah, you can go, uh unless trustee Laskin, did you want to speak on it or?
Mr. Chair, I think we've all made our points. I'm not quite sure why we have, what, it's up to my colleagues, if trustees wish to speak. But I think the points taken around the table about school councils are able to contribute voluntarily. Some say they don't know how to do that. I think it's incumbent upon us to provide the direction, therefore, of how they can do it to make it easy for school councils. Some of the other things that trustee Dawson and King had in their motion, I think are completely applicable um to make it easy and uh and we take them at their word and we should be monitoring. They said they would voluntary contribute, let's make it easy for them and check back to make sure they have.
Thank you. Um trustee Pay.
Mr. Chair. It is regrettable that this board is considering making the exact same mistake it did in May twenty twenty-two. When it passed the disastrous lottery admission policy.
Trust, trustee Pay.
Yeah.
Which, what are we talking about right now?
The mandatory report. I'm talking about like, you know, the fund, fundraising policy and just make comparison here, okay? At the cross of it, these are fundamentally the same two issues. Number one, taking away from some student to give to others and ignoring consultations and community feedbacks. We have sixty percent parents who are in favor of voluntary contributions.
That's what's being.
Trustees, we have an important decision to make tonight.
Trustee Laskin, he's speaking in support of it, so he's allowed to speak. Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. We have an important decision to make tonight. We can choose to do the right thing and listen to the community. Which our own consultation found opposes this mandatory donation scheme. Or given it, giving to the special ideological interest that have driven this board into the ground. We have a seventy point three million deficit. Our EQAO scores are falling. Blaming the ministry for everything only goes so far. We have not done much recently. To make the ministry trust us with more money, we have had scandals after scandal. We tell students in our classroom that they needed to be accountable for their actions. It is time we do the same as the elected leaders of this board. Listening to the community for once would be a positive change. And suggest constant accountability is something we take seriously at the broader level. The community have been clear. They do not support falsely redistributed school council donations. But we have heard and we will continue to hear tonight, the notion that somehow we know better than the community. And that we should override the wishes of the communities. No. It is not a time, it is time to take off our high hats. We're elected to represent the interest of the community, not lies them that we know better. That is condescending and is poor. I be not engaged. I cannot support any proposal that goes against the clear wishes of our community. I will be voting against mandatory distribution of school council donations. Thank you.
Trustee Pay.
Yeah.
I don't know if you were paying attention, but the mandatory, um mandatory contribution was defeated. And now.
That's right. I'm speaking against mandatory, I'm, you know, advocating for voluntary.
Okay, yeah, so you could, uh the, once it's defeated, it's not coming back on the table. So if you would like to use the time to, and like talk about why you would support voluntary contribution or not, that would be helpful, but if not, yeah, because if you trust the time, we did pass and you did have us, we did have a speech.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I already spoke. We need to listen to the community. So committed wishes is voluntary contribution. And they have already done that. I think the board staff are getting knowledge that our parents group been donating voluntarily to the system, centrally system fund to support our system. So let's honor their wishes. Because we're trustees. Their trust, please, they play the trust in us. So tonight, let's honor that trust. Do the right thing, honor the wishes. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, trustee Pay. Trustee Harhat.
Thank you. Uh two items. One, I, I just want to bring out something that came out in GPC discussions on this over, during the two years that I was a member of GPC. That uh in a process of voluntary contribution, just how important it is for the board through staff to prepare sample bylaws to facilitate and support school councils in their discussion, should they wish to have a discussion one time to allow for contribution to the fund or to have facilitative language, should they wish to choose a percent every year. Uh that has been a longstanding request of school councils to facilitate uh giving. Uh and so I, I wish to, to repeat that here. Um and if needed, I will go by way of motion uh for, to, for, for a director to consider that if, if we're not seeing that um uh through implementation. And then I want to ask if we, if we do need to vote procedurally on this. If the, as my recollection was, is that the fundraising policy that came at phase five already had a voluntary contribution process. So if the previous motion was voted down, do we indeed need the minority report? Do we simply approve the fundraising policy as it currently is? Thank you.
So um just for clarity purposes, trustee Harhat, it is better to vote on this because it's, it was the whole debate seemed to be this or that. So it does make sense to be procedurally uh right to, to have a vote on this. Um so, thank you. Can I pass the chair to um trustee?
Go ahead. Go ahead, Chair Shan.
Patel and then I'll add trustee King to that next. Quick question, we are at around eleven, eleven, sorry. We're at around eleven twenty. I want to ask procedurally, is it to Ms. Josephus or, or the staff? If you pass this now, but if you want to bring in other layers of additional pieces to this, to enhance voluntary contribution, uh would it be out of order uh with the next year um to bring that, the idea that trustee Lee talked about, setting up a upper, upper target and, and, and I would love to have some, something like that, I would love to have more communication-based thing. I would love to have school council have options to pass a motion themselves to agree to a percentage themselves. So we don't have the luxury of time to do those things. I just want to know if it will be considered out of order if there was an notice of motion or something like that that is related to this. Yeah, if we weren't able to do it today, it just doesn't make sense to be doing it at this time. Okay, I'll leave, I'll leave. So can we?
Sorry, Joseph Davis. I mean, I think somebody has to put that on floor, right? Somebody has to put that on floor, A and B you're talking about.
So to the chair, what's on the floor now is, is that a voluntary contribution process be included in the fundraising policy? Um, Mr. Chair, do you wish to amend it to add?
So would, would an amendment be that the staff report back on ways to enhance the effectiveness of volunteer contribution? Uh and, and if that comes back, then we would have an opportunity to add anything more um at those points? Or, or if that could be done later without that amendment, I, I don't think we need to sweat now.
Uh through you, um Chair. Um I believe that if the policy passes with the direction for voluntary, then staff could um uh work through the procedure to explore different approaches to, to accomplish that. And I can consider some of the ideas that have been put on the floor at this evening.
Thank you, Director.
Um, all right, in the interest of time, I'll just drop that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Shan. I'll pass back the chair.
Trustee King.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just seeking the same clarity. There were a number of points that were listed in the amendment that we heard from colleagues would be supportive uh with the voluntary decision. I just want to make sure we're moving with the utmost clarity from here and if it needs to be specified in an amendment, I would rather do that. I'm sorry to belabor the evening, but I don't want to have that ambiguity, uh ambiguity as we move forward.
So I don't know if the staff want to add anything more to that. No, it's been answered before, so it's. Thank you.
Um just, I, I think the conversation has been uh very fulsome this evening uh through, through you, Chair. Um I think the board is now considering whether uh a motion is required that the director consider in the procedure applying the concepts uh that were previously articulated in the voluntary contribution. Uh what I heard the director say is with the fundraising policy passed, uh that that he will be directing staff and engaging staff in conversation about what is possible. And of course, we would be centering the conversation that we heard this evening and there would be nothing precluding potentially us adopting those concepts in. There could be different trials, communication pathways to reinforce the voluntary contribution process. So I think that staff do fully understand the complexity of the issue and the various concepts being discussed this evening. And staff take our duty obviously very seriously. This has been a long debated topic and the dedication to enabling equitable outcomes for students is felt among all of us. Thank you.
Through the chair, thank you. I appreciate the attention and I look forward to seeing the reflections as the work comes back.
Okay, trustee Klein.
Chair, will staff be consulting with parent councils and PIAC?
Thank you. So normally consultation is done in regard to policy and not necessarily procedure. However, given the nature of the topic that we're talking about, we can certainly explore opportunities to seek voice through the appropriate avenues.
Okay, that's the end of trustees on the list for this.
Sorry, my name's on the list.
Sorry.
I'll be really quick. I'm through you, Mr. Chair. I'm still not really sure why we're voting on this. If mandatory failed, my thinking would be the default is voluntary since that's what we already do. But sure, I just want to say I appreciated the chair's comments around the increased efforts that we should put into strengthening the voluntary framework. A lot of the trustees who are against mandatory spoke loud and clear about how amazing voluntary contributions are and all the wonderful things that they want to do. So I hope that they continue to uphold that stance and continue to support investing in ways in building out a framework that will actually generate funds that go beyond what the current model is able to generate for other schools. Thank you. In the interest of time, I'll leave it there.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Siskundaraja. Just to clarify, the motion also talks about a volunteer contribution process to be included. So that's where the difference would be, even though voluntary contribution automatically becomes the thing, the whole process piece is what's being included in. We don't have any other speakers on this, so let's get to vote on this. Escrip? Sorry? Who's the second for this? Trustee Nanzira. Shan in favor?
Patel in favor?
Siskundaraja in favor?
Hassan in favor?
Luka Ramen in favor?
Trustee P in favor?
Arts in favor?
Trustee Lee in favor? Trustee Arts is not in the room. I see on the phone, the phone, trustee Arts.
Trustee Arts in favor?
Trustee Rajwani in favor? Thank you. Trustees, we have to vote on the, on the second part, which actually accepts the financial, sorry, fundraising policy as a whole with this part as well. Can I have a mover and a second? Trustee Laskin, trustee McLean, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, that's carried. Trustees, we are close to 10, 20, 10, sorry, 11:30. There are three items left. If trustees wish, we can move the other two items without debate. I know some trustees wanted to talk about the structural deficit piece, but the other two items, the TLC one and the climate action plan either have to be moved to another meeting or we can move them without debate if we have. Let's go ahead. Trustee McLean, did you have to speak on that?
We'd just like to move them to another meeting like we did tonight with the math.
Okay, so we will.
We pulled them so that we could talk about them in public and brag about the good things that are in them to just.
And if they're not, I don't think they're time sensitive before next meeting. I just want to confirm with the director those two can wait.
Through you, Chair, they can be.
Okay. The climate change, Antono Lands Corporation multi-year strategic plan. So we have one item left after that, which is structural deficit update. I'm assuming we can skip the staff presentation on this. Is there any items to be discussed? Any trustees would like to speak on it? Trustee McLean and trustee.
I have, through you, Chair, we have a business arising motion we'd like to table.
Okay, trustee Erhard and trustee, it's 11:30. So can I have a mover and a second to extend by 15 minutes? Trustee Lee, trustee Dawson, all those in favor? Carry. Thank you. Those, those are first. I saw many more hands for passing, so thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, now trustee Erhard, go ahead.
Thanks very much. Can everyone hear me okay? Yeah, is that better? I'm working on standing as I speak. Okay, so for those that heard the update on the structural deficit at Fbec, it is serious. And I appreciate the work of the chair in rolling together the approved advocacy to write a letter throughout the provincial election to all candidates as well as federal election to all candidates on approved advocacy. I also am grateful that we have already sent a congratulatory and opening letter to the newly sworn in Minister of Education. And I think the time is now then to speak about our deficit as this is the board, the board meeting where we are acknowledging this structural deficit that we are projecting for next year.
Trustee Erhard, can I, can I interrupt you for a quick second? As this is business arising, I want to first move, ask if anybody else wanted to speak on the item. If they don't, we'll have a mover and a second to receive the item first because it's an item for receipt. So can I have a mover and a second to receive the structural deficit item? Trustee Dawson, trustee Rajwani, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Yeah, that's carried. Now, since the item has been received now, we move on to business arising. Go ahead, trustee Erhard.
Okay, so there are a number of whereas clauses and I'm just going to note them because I think they are important here that there was a speech from the throne this week that made note of Ontario's record investments in public education. But the second whereas is that despite these investments, and this is key, there's still an estimated $1,500 shortfall in per student provincial funding, one adjusted for inflation. And whereas OPSA has noted that when adjusted, this is the lowest level per pupil funding in more than 10 years. I think this is critical. When, when a need was 10 and it increases to 15, but we are funded at 12, we are in a deficit and despite it being the largest investment, we are still underfunded. And so that, to me, these are critical. Also of note here is the 2425 budget cycle had 31 of the 72 Ontario school boards in deficit. School boards were never reimbursed. And I know this has been a point of advocacy for some time for the extraordinary costs that were encouraged to ensure schools were as safe as possible during the COVID pandemic. And then staff have reported to board now of this structural deficit with completely unfunded areas amounting to more than the deficit itself with 112.6 million. And then just to flag again, in reference to the TDSB structural deficit, the Auditor General's 2024 annual report recommended that the TDSB and the Ministry of Education work together in areas where the TDSB faces unique circumstances contributing to this structural deficit. So it's many whereas clauses, but I do believe they're critical to lay out the reason why there is urgency to write to the recently sworn in Minister of Education to make note of the need for education funding in '25, '26 because we still not, we still have not received a financial presentation from the province, the public has not, on what that education funding would be. And that to make note of TDSB's projected deficit situation, making note of the areas currently underfunded, the urgent need for education funding in '25, '26 to address the growing inflationary gap in per pupil education funding province wide, and then to express a desire to work together in areas where the TDSB faces unique circumstances contributing to this structural deficit. I'm suggesting we also send this to the Minister of Finance and OPSA. I think it's important. I'm hopeful, but I also think we may need to be prepared for other letters as well. But I think it's very important that we, that we put forward a desire to work together and also an acknowledgement that this deficit is structural prior to the government making its announcements to give them, give them the opportunity to adequately fund us in line with our request. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Erhard. Trustee McLean.
Thank you, through the chair, and I'll go quick. I'm not hopeful at all, but I think we should do it anyway. I think it's, when you ask a talented politician and you make a point about four areas and they respond, they'll pick the one they like the least, the one they find the simplest, and their answer will be solely focused on this. And we do that a lot. We advocate and we put on a whole bunch of reasons why we think we're underfunded. But by making this a single issue, the response will have to be directly in response to the question. And I think there's merit in that. I think there's merit in doing it ahead of the funding announcement. I think there's value in that. And every time we push them on education of any kind, the answer is always, we make record investments. And they do that not to reply to our question as much because we understand that the buying power of what, although they're giving, they're writing a bigger check, but the buying power is diminishing. And that's not news to them because we've been telling them that, OPSA's been telling them that for years. But they make this statement because people who aren't as well informed think this sounds like a good, a good response and they accept that. So I think any chance that we get to, to highlight the negative effects of inflation on the increased pool and the reduced buying power is a constructive exercise for us to do. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee McLean. Any comments, questions? Seeing none. Moved by trustee Erhard, seconded by trustee McLean. Do we have escribe for this or do you want by hand? Escribe, please. Shan in favor?
Siskundaraja in favor?
Trustee P in favor? Trustee Arts?
Arts in favor?
Trustee Lee in favor? Trustee Gos? Trustee Gos in favor? Trustee Hassan?
Hassan in favor?
Trustee D. Davidis? Let's see, trustee D. Davidis? Trustee Laskin? In favor? Trustee Luka Radman, are you online? No, I don't see you. Absent. Trustee Siskundaraja?
Yeah, I said I was in favor. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Right, that's carried. Thank you. Can I have a mover and a second to postpone consideration of 16.52 Toronto Lands Corporation multi-year strategic plan and 16.59 2024-2025 Climate Action Plan to the next meeting? Trustee Rajwani, trustee King, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, that's carried. Just reminding there's a notice of motion from trustee Shannon. Sorry, that's myself and trustee Gos, number 17, for next consideration at the next PPC. Don't think there's any other item. Now a motion to adjourn. Trustee Rajwani? You don't need a second of a motion to adjourn, do you? Trustee Patel, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, that's carried. Thank you, everyone.